Everyone, please get to their seats, please. All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the annual town meeting. First, I'm going to ask if everybody would rise if you can and join me with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we get into the articles, I do want to introduce everyone. Starting at my left, Kate Hodges is town administrator. Eva Fried is the town council, moving to the select board. We have Jason Allison, who is replacing the flag right now. Mr. Kerrigan and Alex Turner. Then we have the finance committee, Emily Nataro, Jocelyn Malott, Stan Starr, Michelle Vasquez, Dick Trussell. Then we have Cheryl Gharapi, the finance director, and Amanda Ford is at the end. She's will be making her way in in a minute. We do have clickers again this year, and the green button is yes, the red button is no. And when we call for a vote, we'll try to give you a certain number of minutes that, you know, say, and we'll give you like the 30-second or 20-second ticker saying when voting is going to stop. With that said, we may take, if there's some non-controversial articles or articles that seem like they're pretty well-defined already, I may ask for a show of hands and see if we can move things along that way. We do have an overflow, and that is in the gym, I believe. David Carr is in there. Thank you, David. David, anybody in there?
We have two people in here.
Okay, so thank you. So just so that we kind of talk about procedurally, I know most of you have been to town meeting many, many times. I will say that I would encourage you, if you want to talk on an article, make your way to the microphone. I don't want anybody in line and then somebody, you know, making a motion to move the question. If you're in line, before somebody makes their way to the microphone to move the question, I will recognize you. Now, Ms. Turner had wanted to address the audience for a minute, so Alex.
Thank you, Moderator O'Neill. I just want, as this is my last, can you hear me? Okay. Okay, thank you. This is my last town meeting after serving for 12 years, and I wanted to take the opportunity to thank all of you as voters, especially those who come to town meeting. I take civic responsibility very strongly, and there is nothing better than town meeting. So thank you for coming and legislating this evening and at every town meeting. I also want to take, thank the staff and my fellow elected officers and volunteers who serve the town and make Lancaster a better place. I'm stepping back to take care of a temporary health setback, but I assure you, I will be causing trouble and still be involved in Lancaster. So thank you very much for the honor.
One more, I'm going to recognize Mr. Kerrigan for a moment.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Unfortunately, for some of you, this is not my last meeting as a select. Sorry, you got at least another year. Before we begin the 20 articles, oh, 19 we have to consider this evening, I did want to take a moment to recognize and do something we don't get a chance to do here in town and haven't had a chance to do, I think, ever technically in town. Before that, I'd like to invite our chief of police, please come on down, Everett Moody. And to, there he is, the other Everett Moody. Could you come down? The better, more handsome Everett Moody. You can come up on the stage now, it's okay. So Everett Moody, most of you know, junior now, has been a lifelong resident of Lancaster and has served this community with great distinction. Some quick highlights of Everett's service. June 28th, 1995, I should ask him these dates, see if he knows what happened on them, but he began his time as a reserve police officer here in Lancaster. On November 4th, 1998, he became a permanent reserve officer. More on that in a minute. May 19th, 1999, he became a permanent, full-time police officer. And October 20th of 99, he received his first commendation, to be followed by many, many more throughout his distinguished career here in Lancaster. March 21st, 2016, he was promoted to lieutenant, and July 1 of 2021, he was appointed our chief of police. Fun fact, I told you we'd get back to the one from 1998. Fun fact is that on Everett's application for that position, there was a question under the category of honors, citations, and positions held in school organizations. I bet he never thought this was going to come back. In that section, he wrote, "I have received several honors during my scholastic career. My freshman year, I was awarded the most physically fit man in the class," "along with making the honor roll." So with that, you will see later in this evening's town meeting, an article to create, ask you as voters next year to create a public safety commissioner here in town, which would serve the role of chiefing both police and fire. The select board has asked Everett to take on that responsibility, and it's my honor to, well, first, where's Mandy? It's her honor, Andy? She's going to do the real goods.
Do you, Everett Moody, solemnly swear that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the United States of America and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and will support the Constitution and laws thereof?
Yes, I do.
Do you, Everett Moody, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as the police and fire chief, referred to here as public safety commissioner for the town of Lancaster, and will obey and be bound by such laws, rules, and regulations as are or may be from time to time laid down for the government of Lancaster?
Yes, I do.
Do you, Everett Moody, hereby accept the position of police chief, fire chief, referred to here as public safety commissioner for the town of Lancaster?
Yes, I do.
One more thing.
So Everett exemplifies public service and deserves this more than he would ever recognize. It's my honor to have his father. I took his chief badge off, hopefully for the last time, and we're inviting his father to pin his commissioner chief, or badge on.
You got your vest on?
Yeah.
You better.
That only counts if you bleed. You can tell we didn't practice.
If we want to start on Article 1 while we're doing this, I suppose we can.
There we go.
Sure, sure.
Not going to lie, I thought about what to say for quite a few years now. I knew that I would start off by saying how proud I was to stand here and tell you that my childhood dream had come true. But if I'm being honest, even in my dreams, I couldn't have imagined the journey would have taken me to this point. I wouldn't have dreamed or imagined the support that I would have received and how fortunate I would have been to work alongside such dedicated staff. I am grateful for all those who have taken part in helping me, my family, parents, members of the police department, Chiefs Lamb and Burwinkle, all the town staff that I've been fortunate enough to work with. Kate, I appreciate you, although I'm mad at you right now. Past and present members of the board, Jason, Steve, Alex. Alex, it seems like just yesterday you were asking me interview questions. You once asked me, "Why do I want to be a police officer in Lancaster?" I remember answering. I grew up in town, I care about the community. Lancaster is a place where a police officer can make a difference. I believe that to be true even today. Throughout my career, throughout my career, I've continued to ask myself if I've achieved that goal. Lancaster has taught me many things, but it has taught me that the question is mine to ask, but the answer belongs to you. It is you who will decide if I have achieved that goal. I look forward to earning that goal and working with you guys. Thank you very, very much.
One last housekeeping item. If anybody has a disability and can't make your way to the microphone, please get somebody to get my attention. Madam interpreter, the same thing, if you would get my attention if you have something to interpret. Okay, we'll start with Article 1. Oh, before, Mr. Kerrigan. For the most part, I am going to stick to the same three minutes in favor, three minutes opposed to an article. There were a few articles that I kind of have a 15-minute maximum on the presenter. I don't think that should be any problem, but do want to try to keep things moving. Thank you, Mr. Kerrigan.
I move for the town to raise and appropriate by taxation or transfer from available funds and free cash the sum of $28,59,980 to defray the expenses of the town's school departments beginning July 1, 2025, as a precedent of the law.
Okay.
Sorry, 2024.
Okay, presentation.
Good evening. Now that everyone's in a good mood, we can talk about the budget. I am Kate Hodges, and it is my honor to be your town administrator. It is also my pleasure to present you with the proposed budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024. This budget was created using a zero-budget-based platform and proposes a $1,018 decrease in municipal or non-school expenses. Municipal budgets, as a matter of principle, illustrate a community's priorities and values. The budget document seeks to define Lancaster's community needs as we head into 2025. Appropriation requests serve as confirmation of where we, as a community, wish to invest our funds and programs and the services we seek to advance. Our hope is that residents' ability to view Lancaster's budget in a holistic and detailed manner ensures a greater understanding of how and why your town government operates as it does. To begin this year's budget, town staff engaged in several group summits where department managers were asked to outline their department's core values and relate those values back to individual programs, projects, community needs, and where applicable, expansion or improvement requests. As managers, we work together to identify objectives based on our overarching goal of leveraging partnerships and collaboration between departments. No silos, less duplicative efforts, and greater appreciation not only for one another, but what other departments do for and in Lancaster. This year's budget works to link each allocation request back to an overall goal, and in many cases, more than one. The result, this budget, we believe reflects Lancaster's community priorities and our collective departmental goals. Perhaps most importantly, through the collective work of the select board, finance committee, and town staff, Lancaster has now entered a far more financially stable budget situation than in years past. In short, while painful, the override did as it was intended, and it stabilized our operation. We're now in a position to utilize town funds from free cash to make our first debt payment towards the high school project. In terms of specific objectives for the coming year, the need to continue to stabilize finances and right-size our organization is clear. Strategic budgeting at its core surrounds the ability for those making recommendations to utilize multi-year planning processes. Last year, we could barely see the next fiscal year in front of us. We had some projections, sure, but because we had no real leverage within the budget and we had very little free cash to play with, we lacked any real specificity in projecting our financial position beyond that current year's emergency. This year was markedly different. We started with zero, instead of simply what we had in years past, and we built the budget from the ground up. When we did that, we were able to see what we really needed for funding and how that funding was going to contribute to achieving our goals. Municipal finance is its own beast, and it takes time working in, not just simply studying, to really understand its nuances. There are things we cannot do financially that private industry can. There are strict regulations relative to taxation and budget forecasting that simply aren't present in the private sector. It is no secret that the majority of the tax base in Lancaster is received from what is referred to as inside the levy, meaning the taxes charged based on the valuation of your home or businesses. Nearly 76% of the town's operations are funded through the levy, and while there were some years that the tax rate was hovering around $20, the illustrative graph on the right shows that over the past several years, there has been a noticeable downward trend in our rates. In 2023, the rate was at its lowest in more than a decade. That was the same year the town underwent a reevaluation in real estate. Most folks saw their taxes increase, but this was due to individual home values increasing, not because of an excessive tax jump. Notwithstanding that, the passage of the override last year increased our tax rate by another 25 cents, and that was a hit to a lot of folks. It's a hardship that we are committed to mitigating to some degree as best we can for the municipal side of the budget. Remember that Lancaster's budget of nearly $30 million allocates about 6.6 or 20% towards town operations. The additional 80% is comprised of payments to our schools and other required insurances, debt payments, post-employment and retiree benefits, and other nondiscretionary items. In terms of school funding, Lancaster is part of both the Minuteman Regional Voc-Tech and the Neshoba Regional School District. We also pay a small sum to Norfolk Aggie for students seeking educational programs that are not provided by Minuteman or Neshoba. This year, the budget book breaks down the actual school costs into separate categories, including general assessments and debt. Minuteman's total assessment decreased this year by $330,000, while Neshoba's increased by about $686. Neshoba's school budget is based on a number of factors, including the state's required assessment and, in cases such as the high school, a rolling average of student enrollment. Neshoba's operating expenses increased, as we can see, but the total increase is very much in response to the capital debt service, which is up more than $2 million from last year. This is due to the passage of the high school building project. The three communities voted to fund and adopt the school project at town meeting and via ballot vote. Now we have to pay for it. Please note that the FY '25 debt amount is much smaller than would be coming in the years thereafter. For FY '25, the bill is about $717,000. The reason I mention this is because we need to tackle this from a long-term forecasting perspective. We need to take steps today that will help mitigate the increases in FY '26 and beyond. This slide was taken from Neshoba's budget presentation to the school committee and shows the aggregate amount for Lancaster assessments, including the state's fixed assessment and the variable assessment based on Lancaster's student enrollment. Lancaster's increase this fiscal year to next is a little under 10%. Our student population is growing at a higher rate than that of our other district communities. Minuteman's building project is also being accounted for in this year's budget, similar to years past. That amount is an increase of about $227,000. However, enrollment of Lancaster-based students at Minuteman has decreased the operating budget, and it's adjusted accordingly. Overall, these changes provide a net decrease of about $300,000 from this fiscal year to next. So in short, Minuteman's net savings helped cover their capital and debt increases while also yielding a surplus. This is a general fund budget book snapshot for FY '25. It is located on page 30 of the budget book. This year's budget allocates $717,731 from free cash to pay the first debt payment towards the new high school. The manner in which this is depicted on this sheet is required by the state's Department of Revenue because, when cities and towns opt to use their free cash to lower the tax rate, which is what we are seeking to do here, the corresponding reduction amount must show clearly as an expense, not a revenue. In short, we're using our certified free cash to lower your tax rate. If we didn't do this, the tax rate would have to increase by 70 cents. That would be 70 cents for each $1,000 of your home value. The outside-the-levy amount seen here in red includes this first payment for the high school and other required debt payments for the Prescott Building, the High School Athletic Complex, and Minuteman. Put simply, last year's override was for $1.2 million. If we were to reduce this year's budget by 1.2 million, we would not be level-funded, and we would need to apply our free cash balance to our operating budget in order to achieve balance. A concerted effort was made not to do this, as it reflects poorly on our bond and credit rating, and it is not financially prudent. Additionally, reducing the budget by a $1.2 million amount would leave the town paying nothing from the current levy to the school debt. Therefore, in order to pay that, the town would need to add the 70 cents back to the tax rate once it's set. This is what's commonly referred to as outside-the-levy or exempt debt. It's added to the amount of the tax rate after the budget is set. The average home value in Lancaster is about $470,000. For a home valued at that amount, the increase would be an additional $330. That would be added to your FY '25 tax bill. The select board, finance committee, and town staff did not want to do this and hoped to stabilize, if not decrease, the amount due in FY '25 for residents. This budget, as presented, negates the need for additional money in the tax rate. Folks have asked a lot of questions about the town's free cash position. Yes, we had a healthy free cash, which was certified this past year, for a total free cash balance of 2.6 million. I want to be clear that the free cash influx certified this year was derived from savings that were realized in FY '23, meaning the free cash balance certified this year was money we did not spend from July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023. The select board and finance committee recognized the town's use of free cash to balance its budgets in fiscal years '21, '22, and '23. That, coupled with the fact that as a town, we need to prepare for our high school debt and need the ability to replenish our free cash and allow for capital expenses, we realized the need to ask residents for an override. We built that year's budget hoping for the best, meeting approval of the override, but planning for the worst, that the override would not pass. In the latter part of FY '22 and in early parts of '23, there were serious spending freezes. Specifically, any position that was vacant or became vacant was instinctively frozen. There was no sense in hiring someone for only a few months simply to lay them off. Also, candidly, we were not a particularly sought-after community for exactly the same reasons. The decision to leave certain positions vacant until we had greater financial stability was not only necessary, it was the most financially prudent thing to do. Projects that were slated to move forward in roads, stormwater management, conservation efforts, and town building maintenance were delayed or canceled outright, in the case of the Old Town Hall, even to the detriment of the building. A spending freeze was put in place that also saved considerable funds. And while, yes, these efforts yielded a positive free cash balance for '23, this is not a sustainable way to run our organization. We need a police lieutenant, we need a conservation agent, we need DPW crew members. We need to take care of our buildings and our assets, we need to pay our staff decent wages so they will remain working here. So while the positive balance was realized in FY '23, we will not likely see that moving forward. It is with that in mind, the town leadership chose to apply a portion of the positive balance to this year's debt obligation. That is also why you will see a request to deposit money into the capital stabilization in Article 2. These were prudent policy decisions made by the finance committee, the select board, and town staff in order to offset what will be a very high annual bill for the next 30 years. Again, it's important to note that the new high school, which was approved by three towns last year, has an overall cost of $240 million. The three towns are responsible for about $177 million. So put simply, Lancaster has a bill equal to $60 million, which we have 30 years to pay. $60 million divided by 30 years is about $2 million a year, and that's the principal. We haven't added the interest quite yet. The proposed scenario discussed this evening sustains a level-serviced operation for both the town and schools and provides the best financial stability we could hope for in the wake of last year's override. We were clear the override was projected to provide some semblance of insulation for tax hikes for about five years. As we enter year number two, we hope you see that the decisions we collectively made as a finance team do just that. It's not an underwrite, but it's darn close, particularly when we added $60 million just a few months after passing it. The finance committee, select board, and town staff worked hard to bring this budget to fruition and each asked for your affirmative action on this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. I think Mr. Kerrigan had raised an item to me, and I'm going to note, and if everyone would just look at each one of the articles, at the bottom of each article, it recites whether the select board, finance committee, or any other organization had affirmatively taken action on this. Is that fair?
Yes. And Kate mentioned at the end, the select board proudly recommends affirmative action on Article 1, as I believe does the finance committee, well, I know the finance committee does. Thank you.
Now, we're going to ask for discussion, and I'm going to ask everyone if, please, identify yourself by name, your address, and then you are free to speak. Good evening.
Good evening, Wind Park, 928 Main Street. This isn't a question, it's a comment. Not too long ago, when we came to town meeting, I think, we were simply asked to vote on the budget as it's printed in the warrant. No explanation provided. So we've come a long way, Kate, and I know, I know there are a lot of people who were a part of that analysis and the summary, but you really drove it. So I really appreciate all that detail, all that insight. It's more than I can comprehend or read, but I appreciate it anyway. So thank you.
Yes, sir.
George Franz, 13 Highfield Drive. I certainly concur with Win's statement that it was a real move ahead to have that explanation. But I would raise one article or one concern to the select board and the school committee, and it's the cost of Minuteman. I am and have been, for a long, long time, a big supporter of vocational technical schools. I think they provide both excellent education and a unique opportunity for kids who don't quite feel comfortable in the mainstream. But to go to Minuteman, every student that goes to Minuteman costs the town a little north of $40,000 a year. In comparison, Monticlet or Monte Tech Vocational costs about $17,000 a year and is a highly accredited school with many, many excellent programs. So I don't know whether or not it's possible for us to investigate engaging in the compact with Minuteman, but I would, I would suggest that it's worth a look. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Carr, anybody making their way to the microphone?
No.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Hi.
Yeah, hi, Rebecca Young Jones, 94 Barnes Court. I'm just a little confused. So we have an excess of $1.2 million this year. The tax rate's going to stay the same. So we're going to gather the same amount of tax next year. So why doesn't that keep augmenting? No, that's, my presentation went over that. But no, so instead of adding 70 cents to the tax rate to pay this year's debt payment, we're paying it from free cash. The next article will ask to appropriate an amount to the capital stabilization, which I will get into, because I think it's out of order here. But that is what we're going to do as a policy decision with the free cash. It is true, if you were going to have an underwrite for 1.2 million, as I had said, then we wouldn't have enough to pay our debt, nor would we have a balanced budget without raising the tax rate. So the proposal is not increase the tax rate or have an underwrite and then be in this exact same position and twice this position in FY '26.
I'm still confused, because it means that you'll be, if the tax rate stays the same, that means that the income next year will stay the same.
Right, but in FY '23, the reason we had a surplus is because we didn't fill six positions and a litany of other things. We won't realize that same savings in the years coming, because we've hired those people and we've done the project.
I understood that there was not yet a determination about why we had that $1.2 million extra.
There was plenty of time that we discussed it at both the Select Board and the Finance Committee.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, so I think we are ready to vote, and this, we will use the clicker. So green is yes, you are in favor of the article. Red is no, you are against the article. So we will commence voting now. When Mandy says so. Okay, you can vote now, please. All right, and if everyone could finish your vote in the next 10 seconds, please. Okay, and stop voting now, please. Okay, the results are in, and of 215 voters, 188 voted in favor, 27 against, so that article clearly passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer $1,296,500 from free cash to the town's capitalization fund. Capital stabilization fund.
Okay, so this is Article 2.
Mr. Moderator, this is affirmatively recommended by the Select Board and the Finance Committee.
Thank you.
I just want to make a correction on the slide, which I just noticed, that it should be 1-2-9-6-5-0-0. Apologies. This article seeks permission to deposit $1,296,500 from the town's free cash into the town's capital stabilization fund. Free cash is defined as the town's unrestricted fund balance that is available for appropriation after all liabilities are paid. This remaining balance is certified by the state. Certification happens after certain reports are filed, which are due annually by October 31st and after the tax rate is set in November. The order in which Massachusetts cities and towns hold their annual town meeting is the same order in which the state certifies free cash. Lancaster's town code specifies that Lancaster's town meeting must be the first Monday in May. Therefore, we are middle-of-the-pack relative to getting our free cash certified. This generally happens in mid-March. Obviously, we start the budget process far before that, usually in August, if not July. So it's not until much later in the process we have the opportunity to talk about how to use free cash. Free cash availability impacts a community's financial stability and provides us with flexibility during capital planning or when contemplating how it is that we're going to pay for long-term projects and investments. Since limited cash balances negatively impact a community's bond rating, and because this year may be the most important bond rating audit Lancaster will have in decades due to the high school project, a concerted effort was made on the town side to ensure that we were in a position to deposit into the capital stabilization and to pay this year's debt without raising the tax rate. These efforts included budgeting conservatively, spending wisely, and submitting the required items to the state ahead of schedule in order to ensure we would have the balance certified in time to make an investment decision for FY '25 that would positively impact the budget. Article 1 included a transfer from free cash to pay the first school debt payment of about $717,000. Here, we seek to transfer an additional $1,296,500 into the capital stabilization fund, where interest can be earned and used to contribute to the FY '26 debt payment. Of the $1,296,500, $296,500 has been allocated for capital expenses. The remaining $1 million will stay in capital stabilization, accruing interest in anticipation of using it to contribute to the debt payment in FY '26. The motivation behind this request directly relates to the town's overwhelming support of the new high school as voted upon at last year's town meeting. 233 votes yes to 78 no. The votes at the ballot box only solidified the community's desire with a vote of 484 yes to 372 no. The majority of the town voted for this project. We are trying to figure out a way to pay for it responsibly. The current allocation for FY '25 of $717,000 removed the need to increase the town's tax rate 70 cents, of 70 cents for FY '25. If we were to save and use a million from capital stabilization next year, this has an impact of about a dollar increase on the tax rate that we wouldn't have to have. So that's a dollar for every $100,000 on your home. If we do not, and we fund the total debt in FY '26, that will have an estimated increase of $2 on the tax rate, or $2 for every $100,000, I'm sorry, $2 of every $1,000 of home value. What we are asking for is prudent financial planning and for the community to take a multi-year look at its finances, so we do not find ourselves in a situation where we need some other override or draconian cuts in order to pay the debts and obligations that the community voted in favor of. In this case, it's a $241 million high school, of which the town of Lancaster will be responsible for a third of the outstanding balance of $176,000, or 60 million. Free cash is truly a critical component of our town's viability. That has never been truer than this year and the years to come. Please help us plan for the impact by allowing smart planning and long-term investments which help to reduce the tax increases, not only this year, but years to come. The Finance Committee and Select Board recommend affirmative action. Thank you.
Good evening.
Ralph Gifford, 861 George Hill Road. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Select Board and Finance Committee, for the countless hours of work that you put into all of this. My question is actually quite simple. I'm familiar with the stabilization fund. Anybody who's attended town meetings for decades is familiar with that. We know that, for example, to appropriate money from the stabilization fund requires a two-thirds town meeting vote. The capital stabilization fund, does the same rules apply to that? Or are there different rules that apply to that? And could this be used for any capital expenditure? Thank you.
As of December, a capital stabilization is a simple majority vote. And council would like me to say it can be any capital project.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Kyer, anything? Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Carl Fawcett, 472 Harvard Road. Are we forecasting a surplus in this fiscal year, since we're about three-quarters of the way through?
Unfortunately, no, we are not. As a matter of fact, our revenues are down by somewhere in the neighborhood of $150,000. So as I was saying before, what had happened in FY '23 in its amount is probably an anomaly based on, you know, what we had done then pre-override, but we are not. We might have some, but it certainly wouldn't be a windfall by any means.
So I guess the other is, you're saying in your presentation that 2023, the savings was from not having staffing and other. I was wondering, do we have an accounting of what makes up that 1.2 million that could be shared with us?
Yes.
Yeah.
We presented that to Finance Committee, and I kind of went over it during our free tax presentation, so I can certainly get that out.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. More questions or comments? Okay, I think we're ready to vote, then. Once again, we'll use the clicker for this, and you can begin voting now. Okay, Mandy, if you can move the screen just a little bit, I can't see the vote. Yeah, okay. All right, so of 223 voters, again, could you move a little bit? Thank you. Thank you. 202 in favor, 21 opposed, so that clearly passes. Thank you. Article 3.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to move to appropriate $176,600 from retained earnings of the town's Renewable Energy Enterprise Fund to finance the operation of the landfill solar array for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024.
Second. Thank you.
Thank you. Article 3 seeks the ability to appropriate from available funds the sum of $176,600 from retained earnings in the town's solar field located on Route 70 in Lancaster to finance its operation in FY '25. Enterprise funds are separate accounting and financial reporting mechanisms for which revenues and expenditures are segregated into accounts with separate financial statements than those of other town accounts. Enterprise funds identify the total direct and indirect costs of providing the service. In FY '25, the town is projecting the costs associated with the solar field operation to be at or equal to the costs to maintain and run the system. This is because in FY '25, the town needs to spend additional funds from retained earnings to replace several solar panels throughout the system that are either underperforming or in some cases, broken. As in years past, the total output from the system offsets the energy costs associated with powering certain town buildings, including those on the main campus and along Main Street. The Select Board and Finance Committee recommend affirmative action on this article.
David, anyone making their way to the microphone? No? Okay. All right, then I think for this article, we will as well do the clicker, so you can begin voting now. 10 seconds to complete voting, please. Thank you. 220 votes, 210 in favor, 10 opposed, so that clearly passes. Okay, we'll move on to Article 4.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate the sum of $1,228,250 from the Water Enterprise Fund to finance the operation of the Water Department for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, as outlined in the table in the warrant.
Second. Okay, so moved to second. I know the Finance Committee has a report on this, so we'll recognize Finance.
Mr. Moderator, Article 4, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $1,228,250 or any other sum of money from the Water Enterprise Fund to finance the operation of the Water Department for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, as outlined below. And the Finance Committee approves that.
Thank you, Ms. Vasquez.
As does the Select.
Thank you.
Similar to the fund addressed in the previous article, the Water Enterprise Fund is a separate account and budget where revenues and expenditures supporting the town's Water Department are segregated, and they are then appropriated to cover 100% of the costs associated to run the operation. This fund is overseen by the DPW Commissioners, a separately-elected entity for Lancaster. Direct costs generally consist of personnel services, operational expenses, and capital outlay, which are budgeted and accounted for in the enterprise fund balance sheets. Indirect costs and expenditures budgeted and accounted for in the general fund on behalf of the enterprise funds are allocated at the enterprise's end of year. Examples of these indirect costs include accounting, treasury, insurance benefits for employees, equipment and vehicle maintenance, and other asset insurances. Superintendent Scott McDonald and members of the commission are present this evening should anyone have a question on this article.
Thank you, Kate. Discussion.
Carol Jackson, 40 Fernsworth Way. It says, or any other sums of money, that sounds like a blank check to me. What does that mean?
That's the amount, I'm sorry, that's the That's the amount, I'm sorry, that's the language that is put in the warrant, which is not finalized. The motion is for the actual amount. So what you're reading is, and a lot of the articles say that, or any other sum of money, because it can change up until town meeting, but the motion included the exact funding.
So this is exact, so later on, if they can't come back and say, "Oh, I want more money?"
They would have to have a special town meeting and ask you.
I just want to make sure of that. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi. Lenny Lake and Servie, 1394 Main Street. My question is on the debt service. How many years do we have left on the debt?
Scott McDonald, are you here?
Hi.
Do you want to?
I am not sure. I'm not sure how much we have left on the debt. How many more years?
Would you start again, Scott? You weren't close enough to the microphone.
I'm not sure. How many more years are left on the debt?
I don't have any.
Step closer.
When I did it, it was...
If I had to guess, I would say it was 15 years left.
Okay. Cheryl's got the best guess on that one.
Okay, I believe it was $4 million for the work that was done on Main Street, 117, a couple of years ago?
No, that's a different...
Is it?
Yes.
How many debts do we have out?
Well, the DPW...
I'd like to keep you out of your tubs.
The DPW Board received authorization to borrow that amount, but did not go through with that borrowing. It's likely that you will see a new authorization come forward at a future town meeting because pretty soon, that authorization from town meeting will expire.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? David, anybody in the...
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're ready to vote, then. Are we, Mandy? Okay, if you'd stop voting now, please. Okay, of 222 votes, 208 were in favor, 14 opposed, so it clearly passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move pursuant to MGL Chapter 44, 53E, 1, 2, to set the total amount that may be spent from the various revolving funds for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, as outlined in the warrant.
Second. Thank you. This is Article V. Ms. Hodges.
Yes. Hi there. Receipts from specific revenue sources that are allowed to be segregated from the general fund into separate funds are referred to as revolving accounts. These funds are specifically earmarked for expenditures that support the activity, program, or service which generates the revenue. These funds are regulated by separate and distinct Massachusetts general laws. Typically, revolving funds are authorized for programs or services with expenses that fluctuate with demand and can be matched through fees or charges collected during the year. In Lancaster, our current revolving funds include Parks and Recreation, governed by MGL Chapter 44, Section 53D; separate public works, planning, community development, agricultural, health, and human service, and library accounts, all governed under MGL Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half; and outside consultant or vendor revolving accounts, which in Lancaster's case is our MARTAN service, which is governed under MGL Chapter 44, Section 53G. Generally speaking, the revenues in these accounts are fairly static from year to year. However, this year, a notable increase in recreation's appropriation is depicted here as the Health and Human Services staff had brought in more funds in the past fiscal years than in any year prior. This appropriation seen in the balance sheet reflects their increases of programming and in turn, the expenses related to these programs. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, the Select Board recommends affirmative action on this article.
Thank you. Good evening.
1427 Main Street. On this article, in line, I want to propose an amendment for the recycling thing. They closed it a year and a half ago, and I want to propose to remove that line.
Okay, so do you have, you're saying that, are you asking that in the form of...
And I was the finance person, and it closed last January, and I want to get that removed.
So just to clarify your question, ma'am, you would like that $258 to move for revolving fund?
There's no, there's no bills or anything.
No, I just want to clarify. You would propose it, and I think we'll have to do probably a special...
And I was the finance person.
Understood. I just want to clarify what you would like to do. You'd like to move that $258 to the general fund from a revolving fund, which we can't do.
Yes, and I want to propose it, and I have the amendment here.
Okay, hand it to the moderator.
So we're going to take that as a motion to amend, and so it's been moved to remove the recycling amount of $258 and reallocate that to the general fund. Am I correct? Does that accurately describe what your motion is? Ma'am?
Yes, so...
Hold on, there's no second yet, so I want to... Did I accurately describe what you just wanted to do? You want to remove it from the recycling amount and apply that into the general fund?
Second.
I want to close the whole thing.
Okay. Okay, so there's been a motion made, is there a sec?
Second.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
So my understanding, and I'll ask council to speak to this, but we can make it zero for the fund, but we cannot reappropriate those dollars. So one moment, I'll ask council to speak to it.
Thank you. So this article is asking for a town meeting to set limits by which certain authorized individuals are allowed to expend from the revolving fund without town meeting appropriation. So we're asking here that whoever is in charge of the recycling center revolving fund can spend out of that fund $258. There's no appropriation into the fund. To the extent town meeting wants to make that authorization zero dollars, you could, pursuant to a valid motion, change that to a zero. If you would like to remove and close out the revolving fund, that would require a bylaw amendment. All of your revolving funds are created pursuant to bylaw, and DOR, Department of Revenue, advises the way that you close out the funds and move the funds back to your general fund is by repealing your bylaw. So that's not within, in my opinion, amending your bylaw to remove the recycling fund is likely not within the four corners of this warrant article. So that's something you could seek a special town meeting or do next annual. But to accomplish your goal today of prohibiting any funds from being expended from that account, the motion would be to strike $258 and replace it with zero.
Thank you very much, which I believe is the intent of the amendment. Yes. That's the intent of the motion, is to replace $258 with zero, is my understanding.
Okay, ma'am, could you come back up to the microphone? Just want to make sure that we have what you're wishing to do accurately described.
Yeah, it can be, yeah, it can be zero. There are no bills or anything.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to ask for discussion.
So I'm going to ask the town administrator just to make a comment on it, because we do, there are, we do ask the DPW to do some things that would require use of some of those dollars. So I would suggest that if we'd like to eliminate the revolving fund at a future special town meeting, we can definitely take that up. But for the purposes of this meeting, there is a purpose for those $258, potentially. I understand your point that it's in effect closed and not operating, but we do ask the DPW to do some things relative to that facility that would fall into that.
Just bear with us a moment.
Yeah, so my recommendation, the board has not voted on it, but my recommendation would be that we definitely consider it at a special town meeting, but that we vote in the negative on the amendment. But your point is very well taken, and we will definitely address it in the near future, should your amendment not pass.
Do you wish to comment on it? Okay, so we're going to, unless there's somebody else making their way to the microphone here or in the gym, we'll move it to a vote. So those in favor of amending Article V by removing $258 identified as the recycling center dollars, and I'm going to ask for user clickers, and you could begin voting now. This is on the amendment. All right, 10 seconds, please. And if you could stop voting now. Okay, of 217 voters, 77 were in favor of the motion, 140 were opposed. So the motion to amend the article fails, and now we're back to the article itself. So I know I asked for comment before, but one last chance, anybody have any comment or question? Mr. Carr, are we all set in the gym?
Yes, we are.
Okay, now we're going to go to a vote, and we'll use the clicker once again, so Okay, turn it a little bit more, Mandy. Thank you. 221 voters, 206 in favor, 15 opposed, so that article clearly passes. Now, I was asked at the preparation session last week about whether we could take Article 20 out of order, and the theory was that it has some significant impact on the town, and so I thought that moving it after Article V but before Article VI, because I'm suspecting that after the compensation plan article, that we could have some people exiting, so in the spirit of keeping the maximum amount of voters here, we're going to now take up Article 20. So the citizen who is proposing that, if they'd make their way to the podium, please. Yes, sir.
We need a motion first?
Yeah, you should read it, yes. Or as it's presented in the warrant, if you wish.
I move to accept Article 20, as it's printed in the warrant.
Okay, thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, and are you presenting?
We have four people. Yeah.
Four of you, okay. So go ahead, you can commence.
Hi, Emily Taylor, 634 Main Street. Thank you for the opportunity to present this article to you. Thanks, everyone, for coming out.
Just keep facing the microphone, if you would. Thank you, no.
I apologize for putting, my mother would be really mad at me for putting my back to all these people. I was the chair of the Government Study Committee, which was voted into existence at the May 2022 Annual Town Meeting. The mandate was to study the form of government and recommend any changes, improvements, look for opportunities for improved efficiencies, that sort of thing. I would like to note that in the mandate that the town voted on, there was not mention of a charter. Importantly, the Select Board and the town administrator later did ask us to look into the charter, and I want to just acknowledge that we did look at that. There was a survey question. The survey was developed, distributed, and closed before I became the chair. There was one survey question. The data on whether or not the town should pursue a charter was inconclusive. Therefore, the committee did not recommend a charter, nor did we recommend against a charter. Rather, we recommended that the proposed Standing Government Study Committee, which we hope will become a thing, study the charter issue. So there was no, it was not a zero-sum game in terms of our recommendation about this and our recommendation about the charter. We are proposing that the town vote to begin the process of expanding the Select Board from three members to at least five. My colleagues will go into a lot more detail. Something I really want to point out, though, is that we've been repeatedly asked, what problem is this solving? And I want to remind people that I don't think there needs to be a bleeding heart for there to be, like, you know, somebody on the ground for there to be progress. There doesn't have to be something horribly wrong. This is not a referendum on the current Select Board. This is not a quick fix. Like, if we, this is not how you get people off a Select Board. This is not how you, you know, flood a Select Board with other people. This is a two-year process at minimum. The town would have at least two more opportunities to vote on this. So again, let's not stand in the way of progress. We are almost 8,000 people now. We've been the same number of Select Board members for over 200 years, and this is an opportunity for us to have more representation and show progress, and that we're listening to everyone in town. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that is a pretty big block of text in the warrant you're holding. And so just to recap what the objective is of it and what the effect is of it, it just begins the process of expanding the town's Select Board from three members to five members. The whole process will take two years and requires a second ballot vote that will be in May, and the ballot vote would be in 2025, and the process would complete in May 2026 if you elect new Select Board members. And the effect of it is, it actually just, approval authorizes the town to ask the state to pass special legislation for us. That will allow the town to take a ballot vote next May on expanding the Select Board. Next slide, please. What's included in that big block of text? It authorizes the town to request special legislation, allowing us to expand the Select Board. That's a routine type of municipal request in Massachusetts. That's a routine type of municipal request in Massachusetts. In the last few years, we've requested special legislation regarding police civil service, about the Decam parcel on Old Common Road. It's just part of the relationship between towns and the state. Some things require that special legislation. Next, it requests that the special legislation not take effect until the town approves it with a ballot vote. So even if the legislature passes a special act for us, you have to take a ballot vote and accept it before it will take effect. And then it ensures that the final election of new board members won't happen any earlier than the local, the local election in May 2026. So there's no risk that if something triggered a special election in the middle of the winter, we wouldn't have to elect a bunch of selectmen. Next slide, please. Oh, sorry, this slide. Thank you. All right. And it's a three-step process. What are those three steps? After that article is approved tonight, the town will request the special legislation allowing the expansion. And there are a lot of these. Just in the last decade, there were requests to expand select boards from Hamilton, Rehoboth, Sudbury, Groveland, Southborough, Sherborne, Brimfield, Milton, Fairhaven, Merrimack, Sterling, and Sudbury. So it's a common one. Step two would happen next year. So when you go to, to vote at the annual town election next year, you would see a question at the bottom, kind of like we have a question this year, and it just asks, do you want to accept the special legislation that was passed for Lancaster? That little snippet is a picture of what it looked like in Milton, which is another town that followed this, the same process. And then the final third step would be in 2026. At the annual town election in 2026, voters will elect three select board members, one to fill the seat that expires that year, no matter what we do, and then two to fill the newly created seats. And the way you'd elect them is through a ballot that looks like that. So you'd see a list of all the nominees, and you'd pick three from a list. And what would happen is the, the person who gets the most votes from the list would serve a three-year term. The person who gets the second-most votes would serve a two-year term, and the person who serves, who gets the third-most votes would serve a one-year term. And that would set up the normal rotation, where every year we elect two selectmen going forward, and then every third year, you just elect one, because we have five. And this is going on in a lot of towns. Sterling is actually on step two right now. So next Monday, Sterling will go to the ballot, and they'll see one of those little boxes in the middle, and they'll vote yes or no. Lakeville and Merrimack have, they did that last year, and they, this year, have elected new selectmen to fill new seats. So towns are doing this all the time.
Can I ask you, you got out of line and got back in line, so is this still part of the presentation?
Yes.
Sorry about that. My name is Russ Williston. I live at 4 High Field Drive.
Yes, sorry, we're all part of the presentation.
Okay.
Next slide, please. Just to give some background on where this article came from, again, the Government Study Committee, of which I was a chair and is now disbanded, developed and distributed a survey in the fall, developed over the summer of 2023 and distributed in the fall of 2023. The, what we did was we looked at the, the questions for which there was the most compelling clear evidence, as we were not meant to opine, we were meant to look at data. The question about the size of the select board had very clear data. I believe the number is about 59% of people responded that at least five members are, is the appropriate number for the select board of the town of Lancaster. There's been some pushback about the size of the survey. I'd like to note that the survey was about 276 people, and there are 225 here tonight. So things are decided by small numbers in this town. And if it's, if our votes at town meeting are going to be valid, I'm not saying a survey has the same weight, but let's not dismiss it out of hand. The Government Study Committee voted unanimously to recommend that an article to expand the select board be placed on the warrant for this annual town meeting. We made that recommendation to the select board. At the annual town meeting last year, it was advised to town members that we not vote in favor of the citizens' petition for expanding the select board, because the Government Study Committee would be doing their work and providing their report. We did that work, and we provided our report, and the article was not put on the warrant. So that's how it became a citizens' petition. And again, we voted unanimously to recommend that this be a vote. That doesn't mean we voted unanimously to recommend the expansion of the select board, but we did unanimously vote to put an article allowing people to vote on this year's article. Next slide, please. The other big piece of data that we want to share is the Massachusetts DLS recommendation, which is the Division of Local Services from the Department of Revenue. In a report delivered in September of 2023 to the select board, you can see, I won't read it all here, but these are their recommendations of considering a select board membership increase from three to five, and then it outlines a couple of the benefits, which Susan will speak about again. It absolutely did. This report also recommended that the town bylaws be examined and the potential for a, recommending a charter commission be considered. We, like I said before, didn't have the data to recommend or not recommend a charter, and we have recommended that it be on the docket for the proposed Standing Government Study Committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you advance this slide, please? Anne Ogilvy for Turner Lane. Could you advance the slide, please? Thank you. I was fortunate to be a member of the Government Study Committee and had the opportunity to conduct the benchmarking survey that we did, which was kind of the baseline for all of the future work. We thought it was really important, as a committee, to find out what else is happening in Massachusetts with regards to all matters that were under the article that we voted in at town meeting two years ago, when the Government Study Committee was founded. The first chair of the Government Study Committee, Steve Kerrigan, helped with the initial start of the benchmarking. I was then joined by Christine Burke, who was a member of the committee, and we worked on the benchmarking together. Here's a little bit about what we found. If you take a look at the top table, you can see there's about 292 towns in the state of Massachusetts that have a select board and town beating form of government, and it's actually split pretty evenly between three select board members and towns that have five select board members. There's one outstanding town, Westfield, which has seven select board members. Not quite sure why that is, but go, go Westfield, do your own thing. In the bottom table, we just have a little bit more population information to try to help folks sort out why the DLS likely made their recommendation and why this came up for so many townspeople in the survey as being a real priority. So for select boards of three, towns that have select boards of three, the lowest population size is 70, and the highest population size is 30,000. For select boards of five, the lowest population is 2486, and the highest population is 62,000. And then you got Westfield as the outlier on the bottom. I won't spend any time on that. But the point here is that population has something to do with this. This is often why towns will look for more people to help support the work of the town, more volunteers, more brains, more perspectives to be involved. Could you please advance the next slide, please? So we also wanted to tell you a little bit about the folks that are most closely around us, right? We thought people will really want to know what our neighbors are doing. And, and I should mention, when we did the benchmarking, we looked at about 20 other categories. We didn't just look at the size of the select board, we were doing a full government study. So we have all of that data in the report, if people would like to see it. But of course, tonight, we're focused on what are the towns around us doing in terms of the size of their select boards? So you can see Lancaster at 8455. That actually also, that number includes the number of people who are incarcerated at Suzza Baranowski. So the actual population of residents living in town outside of that facility is more like 7320, so we're a little bit above 7,000, just so you can look at this table and kind of put Lancaster in perspective from a population standpoint. You can see that, that towns vary in their approach to this, again, even within their population parameters. And so when we did our benchmarking of 18 towns, we found that nine towns had a three-person board and nine towns had a five-person board. And there was some correlation to population, but it wasn't straight. If you look here, as for the towns around us, you see we're moving up so that more towns around us that have the same population or a little bit larger that we do are moving to a five-person board so that folks can actually manage the huge amount of work and the complexities. So Stowe, a little bit smaller than us, five-person board. Clinton, a little larger than us, five-person board. Harvard, smaller, five. Lunenburg, five. But then we get down to Northville, which is not near us, but an example of a very small town that went to a five-person board. Boards that have three people and are similar size to us, Bolton has fewer people than us, but they're three. Sterling, as we noted earlier in the presentation, is voting this week about putting this question forward on their vote. So they've already done what we're doing. They've passed it at town meeting, and now they're sending it to the legislature. I think that, and then Ayr. Ayr is a special case. They're our neighbor. They're roughly our size, if you don't consider our incarcerated population. They increased from three to five in 2000, and then in 2012, they went back. And there's a whole lot of information about that, if you prefer to go and Google around and find out what Ayr did. But I just wanted to give you a sense of what we did to get here, how towns have typically made this decision with regard to their population, that as the population increases, it's common right now for towns to be looking for more people to support town government in this way. Thank you.
Okay, before you do start, I'm going to ask you to introduce yourself. I had said at the beginning that we were going to have 15 minutes for presentations, and I know that you have four different presenters, but we're over 16 minutes now, so go ahead. But are you somewhat close to wrapping up the presentation? Okay, go ahead.
Sure. Susan Munyon, 96th Grantway. I'm going to turn and actually address the audience, because honestly, you are the town. You make the decision. Collaboration is important, and I think that if you have multiple viewpoints, you get a better result. And going to five people in town will give us that. And Jay Moody was on our Government Study Committee. He was very passionate about making improvements. He was retired. He could attend a ton of meetings. Our select board currently, there's only three. There's a limit to the, how many meetings and agendas they, they attend. You have something like the library that has a five, five trustee members. They can, six, so they can collaborate together and actually work on projects, work on decisions. If we want to expand our business in town and figure out North Lancaster water problems or Decam, how we're gonna, how those water problems are going to be solved, how do we collaborate that we let the senior people of our select board be able to address those issues with, you know, businesses? So I really feel like that, you know, if we can, if we can allow our select board to be able to have meetings with, you know, without breaking, breaking laws, and that more brains come out with better outcomes, I really believe that this is better for Lancaster. And don't forget, it's two years away. You still have an opportunity to vote at town meeting, or town, you know, during voting in two years. So it's just the start of the process. Thank you.
Now, again, I'm going to say, now we're at 18 minutes.
I know, we got two more slides. We're almost there.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, next slide, please. Next slide. This one, yeah. All right. It may surprise you to learn, there are a few concerns about the process, and so we just, we put together a couple of slides just to address the common ones. One of the good things about doing a process that lots of other towns have followed is you can actually look up the news articles from around the time when the towns took these on. And so we put together a couple snippets of common ones. So common concern number one, and here's the headline, "We already have a tremendous lack of volunteers." And the current select board chair in this town is not a fan of the five-member board scenario. He says the town has too many open seats on boards and committees already. Folks may not be aware of the complications. And I wrote, that's from Putney, Vermont, in 2021. I wrote that it's population 360. It's actually population 2,000 and something. That's a typo. But they, again, a small town that took on a five-member select board, they've been able to fill their board every year. Other boards, other towns smaller than us for the five-member select board are Brimfield, Sherborne, Hamilton, and Sterling. Some of those are half the size of Lancaster, so I'm confident we could do it. Next slide. Common concern number two, says, this is from Ayr. Ayr is a town that in 2000 switched to a five-member select board, and then 12 years later, they took a vote to go back to a three-member select board. It's the only one I know of that's done that. But here's a snippet from that time. Clark and two other study committee members served as selectmen back when Ayr had a three-member board. Committee member Tom Horgan said of the present five-member board, bluntly, it ain't working. Laughter erupted when Horgan joked that the spate of late-night meetings would cease with a three-member board, reasoning that less selectmen would shorten the meetings so 40% less people speak. I guess that we've all had a day at work when we wanted 40% less coworkers, so, yeah. But that's an example of a town that has switched back to three, which you can do. It's the same process in reverse, basically. Next slide.
Sir, 20 minutes and 34 seconds. We voted on a 28 million-dollar article with a presentation of 12 minutes and 26 seconds. So I'm trying not to be difficult, but please speed it up.
Yep, all right. I'm just, I am the Oscar music, getting us off the stage. Just want to reiterate everything that everyone else said. This, you know, there's been a lot of pushback, we don't need more government. This is not more government for the sake of bureaucracy. This is more representation. As you've seen from these last two slides, standing select board members don't love this. There's not a great appetite for it. I think that's important to consider as you're voting, and I think that five people is an appropriate number for Lancaster. Now that we're 8,000 people, we've come a long way since, you know, 200 years ago. I don't know how many there were initially. I imagine it was all men as well. But I really just want to say that this is progress. This is more representation. This is not more government. This is more voices. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Modderen.
At least this person was in line. I just want to make the point that the select board recommended negative action on this, and then I'll make comments as a citizen when you, when you deem it appropriate, Mr. Modderen.
Okay. Yes. You can, yes, come forward.
Am I allowed to make my statement?
Well, no, not just, I'll recognize you, but this person's been waiting patiently for 22 minutes, so I'm going to recognize them. Go ahead. No?
Happy to wait for.
No, please, go ahead, proceed.
My name's Tom Seidenberg, 748 George Hill Road. I'm chairman of the Conservation Commission, and my concern is the number of volunteers in town. At this moment, we have 12 open seats on town boards and commissions. I understand the presentation, and I'm actually not opposed to a five-member board. I think a five-member board is fine. I think a three-member board is fine. But if two people in town run for the five-member select board, then that's two less people that are filling seats on other boards and committees. The Conservation Commission, in my six years on the commission, the commission has only had a full board for about a year. Right now, we're a five-member board. We lost someone two months ago, and we haven't filled the seat. Another member's going to step down as soon as we fill that seat. We can't conduct business on a regular basis if we're constantly wondering who's going to fill those seats. There's boards in town that are missing three people. So I, I think five members is fine. I'm not opposed to the, the article, but I am concerned that people don't volunteer. And I think select board is an important board, and so people will run for select board, but that means that they won't be volunteering for the other boards. So, thank you. And please volunteer. And please volunteer.
Mr. Gifford, hang on a second. Mr. Allison.
Yeah, stole my thunder there. So as folks are aware, the select board voted to recommend a native action on this article. I myself am asking everyone to vote no on expanding the select board tonight. This is my perspective. Being a select board member is hard. Being a great team member is even harder. What's also hard is finding great team members. As of this writing, as you just heard, Lancaster has a dozen openings across eight different boards and committees. This list does not include an entire five-member Economic Development Committee no one has applied for. I'd also like to add, I have seen way too many good and kind Lancaster residents resign their positions over the past few years. In the ten years prior to 2020, seven of the previous ten select board elections were uncontested, meaning over a ten-year period, Lancaster could only find one resident to run for select board seventy percent of the time. Seventy percent of select board elections were simply unopposed. I should add, in those three contested elections, we did have, we did, we did have, not one of them had more than two candidates run. Actually, I was not able to find a single select board election where three or more candidates ran for a single seat, not once. Simply put, Lancaster does not have a history of getting residents to run for the select board and, in general, filling volunteer roles. So why was 2020 an inflection point? What has changed in Lancaster since 2020? The answer, progress. Lancaster has made significant strides since 2020 in two critical areas, the first being economic development and the second being leadership. With respect to economic development, since 2020, the Lancaster Select Board entered into an agreement with Lemonster to bring water and sewer to North Lancaster. The Lancaster Select Board entered into a memorandum of understanding with the North Lancaster developer for bringing in much-needed commercial development. Lancaster residents approved the enterprise rezone of this North Lancaster development opportunity. With respect to leadership, since 2020, the Lancaster Select Board hired an experienced and seasoned town leader in Kate Hodges. Lancaster has transformed its financial reporting and budgeting process. Lancaster has remade its community center, top to bottom. Our progress in economic development and leadership is significant. They are all reasons, they are reasons for all of us to be proud. We are bringing Lancaster up. Because of us, Lancaster is on the rise. An unfortunate truth is, not everyone in Lancaster is happy about this progress. There are folks in Lancaster who still want to stop development in North Lancaster. They still want to go back to the old ways of Lancaster. These residents want to reverse our positive direction. I believe the select board expansion is just that, a means to an end for some residents to not only slow Lancaster's progress, but to stop it, to reverse it. I do not want that. I hope you do not want that either. In closing, please ask yourself this question before you vote. Am I willing to run for the select board? If we vote to expand the select board, am I willing to be the one who runs for the new open seats? A hard truth is, if you are not willing to run for the open seats, then who? Not only who, but why? And what do they want for Lancaster? Will they continue to push Lancaster forward? Prior to 2020, barely anyone wanted to be on the select board. And now, now that Lancaster is finally gaining traction, getting stability, there are those who want to tear it all down. Please vote no on the select board expansion. It is not solving a problem in Lancaster, but creating one.
All right, Mr. Gifford.
Ralph Gifford, eight sixty-one George Hill Road. I love following Jason on that one. Maybe nobody has noticed, but actually I am running, so. I stepped up to the call. Jay Moody, actually, had encouraged me to do that, and I don't know, I can't thank Jay at this point, so. This is a pocketbook issue. We need to attract businesses to Lancaster. We need diverse businesses. We need businesses of all size. Now, I'm a businessperson. I understand how business works. Businesses don't like to come to an open meeting and air all of their thinking, their strategies, their plans. They like to have private meetings to build confidence, to build trust, to understand what the possibilities are, then finalize decisions. And at that point, they're ready to come before select board, other boards, and open meeting. So when we became a three-member select board two hundred-plus years ago, we didn't have the open meeting law. And the open meeting law has, it's a great law. I fully support it, but it has an unintended consequence when it comes to developing business contacts, to developing the trust. So we need, we could send just one select board member to meet with businesses, but it is much better to send two select board members. And you can't do that with the open meeting law unless you have a five-member select board. So we need a five-member select board in order to be able to send out two select board members to meet with various businesses, to develop the relationships, the confidence and so forth, to attract the businesses, to lower your tax rate. So if you want lower taxes, vote for a five-member select board and then come out and get involved. Let's make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hello, Leslie Allison, three forty-three Brockelman Road. I come to the microphone this evening to express my fears about this petition. Literally kept me up at night. I literally had to get up and write these words down so I could go to sleep last night. Upon initial examination of this petition, it seems quite harmless. Increasing the select board to five members is presented as a glowingly good idea. Let's increase the viewpoints. Let's increase the diversity. More members to complete the work. It hints at a new camaraderie, a big, new, happy family. While I don't believe it, it's that simple. I will not argue for or against any of the proposed merits of the petition. However, I will tell you that in reading the names of the undersigned petitioners, I have major reservations on the true intentions of the petition. While I believe.
Ma'am, I would like to make sure that we're not having any personal attacks like the outbursts before, so you're not going to read names.
There's no personal attacks.
Hold on, hold on. Sir, do you want to stay or do you want to leave? Button it up. Go ahead, ma'am.
I would like to present some facts about some of the petitioners, if I may.
Well, if we're going to start naming names, I'm going to suggest.
There's no names. There's no names. While I believe that some of the petitioners really do have altruistic intentions, I fear that others do not. I see the petition as a possible wolf in sheep's clothing or a Trojan horse, if you will. I fear that it's not just another tool in the toolbox intended to turn back the progress Lancaster has made toward economic development. As I read the signed petitioners on the letter that came to my mailbox, I was reminded of several other letters signed by individuals that were sent to the Attorney General of Massachusetts in an attempt to prevent the implementation of the enterprise rezone. Letters that were an attempt to turn back the efforts the town has made to stabilize our finances, to decrease the tax burden on our citizens, especially our seniors and those on fixed lower incomes. You may be thinking, how can increasing the number of select board members positively, negatively impact the economic development plans in Lancaster? And unfortunately, I personally do not have the answer to that question. But I can tell you that there are some people in this meeting that do. In the words of the poet Maya Angelou, "When someone shows you who they are, leave them the first time." I do not trust the attention of this petition, and so I say to you, my fellow Lancaster citizens, beware of the Trojan horse.
Thank you. I'm going to, sir, you're still wishing to speak? Okay, so you're going to go next, and then I'm going to recognize Mr. Kerrigan, and then we'll go back here. So go ahead, sir.
Hello, David Mallett, twenty-seven forty-eight North Main Street, Lancaster. Voters, please vote no on Article Twenty, a citizen's petition, which is suggesting an increase to the select board from three to five members. I have had a reversal thought on this issue, and I wish the residents of Lancaster to be informed as why. The nearby town of Eyre switched to a five-person select board in recent years and was forced by controversy to switch back to three members. Why? Infighting and even shouting broke out when members on the town's government, members in the town's governance was greatly disrupted. Eventually, they were forced to take a multi-year process to go back to three to restore civil discourse on their select board. Groton had a similar experience, but over time decided to keep the five-member board. Pepperill chose not to increase to five after watching its neighbors. It avoided the negative consequences of the change to five members altogether. The Government Study Committee, of which I was a member, never considered these cases as they were not brought into our deliberations. Our research was incomplete. I have only recently unearthed them myself. Weighing the cons of such a major change to our government is just as imperative as weighing the pros. This is especially important when making a decision that changes our government structure. Omitting discussion of such negative consequences was a failure to give residents an equal understanding of the pros and cons. Let's take a look at the political temperature in Lancaster. We have been recently recovering from a rezone vote in North Lancaster that included mass resignations by members of the previous planning board to avoid regrettable but needed recalls. Now is not the time to introduce a wild card into our town politics. Increasing the number of open select board seats to a top-three get-in year in 2026 takes the select out of select board. We would need four, five, or even six candidates to make your vote have any meaningful relevance. Who might run on this easy-to-get-in year? Perhaps a disgruntled former planning board member. That is a big concern. Would we become the new Eyre? At the recent candidate night, both nominees stated a need for healing in the town's politics. Moreover, they said they would work toward that end. Since the rezone was the cause of the political breakdown, only the completed development of North Lancaster, with its increased business tax revenue, will mark the end of the underlying distrust. Major changes in our select board, which under the current system works perfectly well, should not be contemplated until Lancaster's needed development is completed and controversy has quieted.
So I'm going to, I'm going to recognize Mr. Kerrigan, then Ms. Turner, and then I want to ask, Mr. Carr, is there anybody in the gym wishing to speak?
Just me.
You do. No, seriously, you do?
Yes.
Okay, then you'll be after Ms. Turner. Go with Mr. Kerrigan.
Mr. Moderator, thank you very much. And thanks, everyone, for the lively discussion. And thanks to the members of the Government Study Committee and everybody who's participating in this discussion, because it's certainly one that we should have. I will say, just as a point of correction to what Mr. Gifford said, it is perfectly legal for two members of a select board to go to a meeting with businesspeople. What they cannot do is deliberate an item before the select board in a private meeting. So just to clarify, there was also a suggestion, although I'm sure it wasn't meant, that we could then do meetings without breaking laws, as if we currently do meetings with breaking laws. So we adhere to the open meeting laws as we are required to, but the open meeting law, to be very clear, will not be changed if you go to a five-person board. Two members of this board could go to a meeting with a business owner and have a discussion about them moving into town. They cannot deliberate any item before the board. So that's point number one. Second, I'm thrilled to hear what Putney, Vermont, did. That's great and helpful. More thrilled to hear what Eyre did, but I'm more concerned about what we did in this room a year ago, which was hear this question and vote this down. I urge us to do the same this year. I am one of those folks who believes this is a solution in search of a problem. I believe frankly that when an issue comes before the select board, we should have a discussion in an open meeting. It should be hard to do these jobs. We should discuss the issues that face you all each and every day in an open meeting where you have a chance to either show up and comment, or watch at home, or re-watch on your computer later, rather than worrying that two of us are meeting in some private room discussing it one-on-one. And then finally, I just have questions, and I see an Old Govey in line, so I'm hoping you'll take some of your time or extra time, well, I can't give it to you, but Bill could, to answer two questions just about the survey. First question, did you have to be a resident to fill it out? And could you fill it out more than once? So that is it, and I thank everybody again for showing up tonight. We appreciate everybody's time and attention. And I'm glad we moved this to earlier in the meeting so more folks could have the time to consider it. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
There you go, Ms. Turner. Ms. Turner, I'm asking you, please.
Oh, she can answer whenever.
No, she can answer when she's, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Full disclosure, I was the dissenting vote. I support the five-member board of selectmen. The majority of my board did not. I will say that last year's town meeting, I did not vote in favor of the town, of the five-member board of selectmen, select board, excuse me, because I, like many of you, heard that the Government Study Committee needed time to take this and consider this article and come with a thorough report. Initially, when we proposed this, I was, as a sitting member of a selectman, I thought three members worked, worked well. After reading the report, and I hope you all have, I was convinced that the five-member board of selectmen was a much better idea. I'm deeply disappointed by the toxic, personal nature that I've heard tonight about assigning motives to people. The biggest clarifier for motives is the election box. If somebody is running and nominate, if somebody runs who you deem to be anti-business or from a part of town that you aren't comfortable with, don't vote for them. But the town, but the town, I believe, can do better with five people because it gives us a broader perspective. It yields better decisions. It's more democratic. Another really compelling reason for me is that the Mass Department of Revenue, Division of Local Service, we asked them to come in and look at best practices and make suggestions. They made many suggestions, including one of them, which was adopting a five-person board of selectmen. I do believe that having, allowing to have, allowing subcommittees with five board, with five members, you were allowed to have subcommittees, and that was one of the reasons the Division of Local Services cited, is important. We are very careful not to speak with one another outside of the meeting. The other thing is that we have a lot to do, and you've heard your adage, many hands, lighter work, you get more done. Where there are meetings that we don't go to and that we should, and I'm just as guilty as any of this, we should be attending school committee meetings, tri-town meetings, with most of our dollars going to the schools. I think we should have a much more active role in many regional meetings, even the Chamber of Commerce and others. I think it's a time for Lancaster to be proactive and not to wait for every town in the Commonwealth to do something before we jump on the bandwagon. You saw that there were a lot of towns that have already adopted this because they have felt that it was the best thing. I know there's been discord in some towns, and one, the one town that did it has been cited frequently, Eyre, but Eyre has other issues too. And I work with them, you know, every, every town does. We have our share of rankers, certainly. The thing that impressed me most about the Government Study Approach, Government Study Committee, is I watched the meetings, and they were very, very careful to make this a data-driven study. They were careful not to involve politics in this. And they, their report honestly turned me, and I hope you really have looked at their work from, to support the five. Now, in summation, I have heard some of the negatives. Bad actors are going to be infiltrating our board. That's possible. If they get elected, bad actors will infiltrate our board. Now, what do you deem to be a bad actor? Now, what do you deem to be a bad actor? I will say, if you have a three-member board and you have a bad actor, he's going to have more influence than a five-member board. If you really want to advance progress, it'll be more... You'll have a more moderate view with five people. You'll have better discussions. We don't get to... We don't debate much. Another alternative view, I think, would be really helpful. Again, some say there is no problem. I think for the reasons that I cited, attending more meetings and participating more, there is. And finally, there is not that no one will want not enough candidates. I agree that we have not enough candidates. The Economic Development Committee was mentioned. It's not even posted on our website for looking for it, and we had... So we... There are those that have looked, but we have to make... We are responsible for making a more hospitable environment for volunteers to volunteer. And again, when we start pitting areas of the town against one another, or people against one another and assigning motives, that discourages volunteerism, as well as not supporting the rapport of a really great committee that put together a wonderful report. So I thank them, and I thank you, and I agree with Tom. Please volunteer.
Thank you. Now, I am gonna ask everybody who's going to speak. I hope that there's something new. We're 45 minutes into this, and I think we've exceeded the Free Range Chicken article from 12 years ago. So with that, I'm gonna ask, Mr. Carr, you have the mic.
And to reiterate what everyone said, I do want to thank all the volunteers here today. But real quick, I know that we gave the number of positions, but right now, there is an opening for the Conservation Commission, two for the Historical Commission, one for the Council on Aging, two for the Animal Control, three for the Board of Appeals, one... Another one for the Cultural Commission, another one for the Historical Commission, and two for the Commission on Disability. We do not have volunteers in this town. We don't. I'm sorry, but if you look at a Venn diagram of everyone who volunteers for something in town, they're all the same people. If you look at people who are on town committees, if you look at people who coach youth sports, if you look at 4H, if you look at Girl Scouts, if you look at Boy Scouts, it's all the same people. Adding two new positions is not going to fix that. It's going to be, if you put your hat in the ring, you get in. For the last 20 years... So Jason, you went back 10. I went back 20. 20 years, we have not had more than two people run for the Select Board at the same time. It's ludicrous, at this point, to add additional seats just for the sake of adding additional seats. Progress for the sake of progress is not progress. I ask that we move to the question.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All right, so it's no debate. We're gonna go right to a vote on the moving of the article, which in the beginning... No, I'm talking now. I did suggest to everybody that I wanted them to have an opportunity to get up and speak, and I know Ms. Ogilvy, you've spoken at least once on the...
I have spoken. No, I have not. I have spoken in presenting the article, not as a citizen.
Okay, okay.
I've also been asked a question by the Select Board here, and I would like the opportunity to take this...
Well, I'm not gonna recognize that. So the article has been moved.
You said you would.
Only for some people, Mr. Moderator. I suppose you need to vote to end the motion, so if they don't, then it's not fair, then they can celebrate. Pass it, then you...
So I'm gonna ask then, everybody, we're 48 minutes into it, everybody wishing to end debate, raise their hand. David, what does it look like for the residents in there?
We have eight, eight raising their hands.
Yeah, and how many are in there? How many?
I don't know who's not a Lancaster resident or...
How many people are in the gym?
One, two, three, four, five, nine, 14.
14, okay. And...
No clickers?
Okay, no, that's... I thought we'd get a quick answer, so we're gonna use the clicker for just the vote to end debate, and please don't leave your spot. All right, are we ready to vote? This is a vote to end debate.
What is a yes?
Yes is to end debate. No means you want to keep discussing.
Not yet.
Okay, you can vote now. Yes is to end debate, no is to keep debating. Okay, and if you could end voting in five seconds. Okay, last time to vote. All right, could you just move out? Yes, thank you. So 229 voters voted, 153 in favor, 76 against. According to my calculator, 153 divided by 229 is .668. We needed 2/3 to end debate, so that ends debate.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to answer your question. You said you would allow people to speak.
It's undemocratic.
Well, somebody's saying it's undemocratic 51 minutes into this article. Can't say that's not.
You said you would allow people to speak.
The people have spoken. They said end debate.
There were a bunch of people that did not speak.
Those wishing to vote in favor of the article is green, is yes. No is no, that you don't want the article to pass. Okay, Mandy, are we good?
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator. Ralph, 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 we're in the middle of a meeting, so... Mr. Moderator, we have to start voting again, I'm informed by the town clerk.
I'm sorry.
I can't hear you.
So, the way our survey...
Okay, so this question been raised that Mr... The last speaker spoke, and at the end of giving what his opinion was, he moved the article, and there's a question about whether that is in order or not, so I'm gonna defer to counsel.
Town Meeting Time advises that to move the question, it has to be the only thing that the speaker does, so they shouldn't give their opinion on the article and then move the question. However, it's the moderator's meeting, so I defer to him, whether he wants to reopen debate and let another person make a similar motion, or whether he wants to continue on with the meeting.
Okay, so in light of that, we're gonna... You were next in line, and I believe you were behind. There was somebody else in line, so you're welcome to come back up. We'll keep discussing.
Thank you, Ann Ogilvy for Turner Lane. I was asked by Chair Carrigan to answer a question. I will do that first. I don't want to be here any later than you folks. But here's the truth about the survey, and that is that the Government Study Committee, under Chair Carrigan's leadership, had not met for four months when the survey was distributed, and the survey was actually overseen by Town Administrator Kate Hodges, so she may be best placed to answer those questions. I believe that yes, it was a residence-only survey. I don't know how that was vetted, and I think you could only answer it once. My personal comment tonight is, to bring us all back to remember, this is something... This is a vote to put something on the ballot. You don't have to decide tonight. You have two years, actually, where you're gonna get asked to make a couple decisions about this. You can do your personal research. You can deliberate with your neighbors and with other members in town. One thing I want to note is that some of the greatest arguments about this tonight, about whether we should get bigger or not, are about the people in town that you should be afraid of. There are people in this town you should be afraid of because they don't agree with you. They had a different opinion than you did, and I'm really offended by that. I'm offended by the fact that if I had a different opinion a couple years ago, I now cannot participate in my town government. My Select Board member can stand up there and warn the entire town about how some of us, a hundredth of us, by the way, who voted against certain things, are now the enemy of our town. This is a problem, right? This is a problem. What we need in our town is more civility. We ought to be able to disagree, even on really important things, right? Like development in North Lancaster. We ought to... We can have some different ideas about what might work, and then we abide by what we vote, but we stick together to vote on the next thing and to try to make positive things happen in this town. And as long as there is a side that is holding onto power so tightly that any dissent, any dissent at all means you are not worthy of having an opinion, we have a problem and we will continue to have it. I see a five-person board as a measure of the democracy we might be capable of in this town. Unfortunately, that's not even what we're talking about tonight. This is just to get something on the ballot, but we spent a lot of time talking about it because there's a lot of fear. Your towns' members, some of them, want you to fear each other. I think we need to stop it. We need to stop it. We need to be more civil, and we need to learn to collaborate with people who we may disagree with sometimes. Thank you.
Hi, Frank Streeter, Bull Hill Road. I'll just start off by seconding Ms. Ogilvy's final comments about collaborating, especially because it is clear that we can always use more volunteers, and if you care enough to come to town meeting, there are some open spots. What I would like to speak about, however, which particularly concerns me, is the use of ad hominem attacks, of which I have seen a number tonight, and if you wish to discourage people from volunteering, ad hominem attacks are the best way to do it. Beyond that... Beyond that, I would say that if you must resort to an ad hominem attack, then your arguments are bankrupt.
Michelle Courier, 31, Sylvan Road. Can we move the question?
Second.
Okay, we're gonna vote that again to end debate, so get your clicker ready, and when our clerk says it's time to vote, we will vote. So the motion is to end... Well, we're voting to end debate, so... And that would be 2/3 vote to end debate. Okay, so yes is in favor of ending debate, no is to keep the debate open. Okay, 10 seconds to end debate. Okay, so just move a little bit, Mandy. Thank you. 205 are in favor of ending debate on 235 voters, so 87.23% are in favor of ending debate. So that passes. Okay, now we're back to the original question.
Can I just use the question? So now she puts the question.
Yes, so now we're gonna commence voting on Article 20, when Madam Clerk says it's Are we good? Okay, so the article does pass by a 51.898 margin. Yes, it was 123 in favor. Go back to the... Move the camera back, please. No, can we focus on the screen? Yes. 123 in favor, 114 opposed, for 237.
Do we need to move to reconsider? Like, would you take a motion later?
That would be appropriate, I think, if you brought it now.
I'll move to reconsider, then.
All right, there's a motion to reconsider, and it's been seconded. Am I reading it right? 2/3?
If you want to reconsider, and you go, yes. So he has to have a moment, and he has to... So that if you want to... If you want to reconsider, yes. Yes.
All right, so... So the motion to reconsider is that if you want this act... This article to come back before the body tonight, you would vote yes. If you want to end it forever, as far as this meeting goes, you would vote no. So we're gonna take that by...
Mr. Moderator, can I ask you a question?
Sure, make your way to the microphone, identify who you are, and go ahead.
Ann Ogilvy for Turner Lane. Just so everyone is absolutely clear, could you explain it in terms of the yes vote on the last question, please? The yes and the no, so everybody...
The town's larger effort to make wages and budget information more available to residents. Again, I want to note that the adoption of these scales does not change the budget previously discussed in Article One. The Select Board recommends affirmative action on Article Six.
Okay, comments on Article Six? Excuse me. Mr. Carr, anybody wishing to speak on Article Six in the gym?
No.
Okay. This is a majority vote. I'm just going to try a show of hands on this. So those in favor of Article Six? Please raise your hand. Okay, those opposed? Okay. That's fine. So Mr. Carr, in the gym, there's one vote opposed in this room is... Could you give me the count, those in favor in the gym?
I went seven for seven.
What'd you say, seven?
Seven out of seven total.
Seven in favor?
Correct.
Okay, so with one dissenter, that passes. Article Seven.
Mr. Moderator. I move to transfer three hundred twenty-nine dol... Three hundred... Oh, sorry. I move to transfer three thousand. It's late. Sorry, my eyes aren't what they used to be. Three thousand twenty-nine dollars and four cents from free cash to pay unpaid bills from fiscal year 2024 as outlined in the warrant.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Now, this requires an eighty percent vote.
Correct. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section sixty-four, requires that any city or town that has unpaid bills from the previous fiscal year, which were legally unforeseeable due to the insufficiency of an appropriation that fiscal year, has to have town meeting's approval by a four-fifth vote of voters present to appropriate the money. These invoices seen on the screen are for charges that were not received until after fiscal year twenty-three had closed. Therefore, we did not have the authority to pay them. We are requesting the authority to do so. Thank you.
Okay, questions or comments?
The Select Board recommends positive action, affirmative action on this.
Thank you. This is an eighty percent vote, but we're going to try the hand vote again. So those in favor of Article Seven, please raise your hand. David, in the gym, people in favor of Article Seven?
Eight for eight.
Eight for eight, okay, thank you. Those opposed? Okay, unanimous vote. Thank you. Article Eight.
No, it's Winn and Linia. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to invite Winn and Linia to present.
I'm sorry.
Don't they read the article?
Yes, you can say as presented, or if you're...
Okay. I would like to present Article Eight, which is for the Community Preservation FY25 Budget, because the community pres...
Linia, I'm so sorry. Mr. Moderator, point of order. Maybe the Select Board made a little mistake here. We're going to make the motion first. I apologize for that.
Okay. I'll wait.
So this is Article Eight. Move to see if the town will vote to hear and act on the report of the Community Preservation Committee on the fiscal year 2025 budget to vote to appropriate or reserve from the Community Preservation Fund annual revenues and the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses and all other necessary and proper expenses of the Community Preservation Committee. With each item to be considered a separate appropriation or take any action relative there as printed in the warrant, period.
Okay, thank you. Now, if you would... It's seconded, and if you would identify yourself and present.
Okay, Linia Lake and Servie, thirteen ninety-four Main Street, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. I just wanted to explain that the Community Preservation Funds are separate from the general fund, and that's why we have to have a separate budget. We base it on what we... The first six months of what was collected in the previous fiscal year, so this is an estimate. It's a moment in time. We do get a state match. We are at one percent. We estimate that to be thirty-three thousand eight fifty-one, which would be nineteen percent. The first year we got a match, it was thirty-five percent, almost sixty-seven thousand dollars. Last year, we got thirty-eight thousand, which was twenty-one percent. The Community Preservation Trust Fund at the state level is funded through the Registry of Deeds, and there has been a slowdown in the number of transactions at the Registry of Deeds. That is why we're getting less state contribution. Are there any questions?
Actually, I get to ask that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just moving things along.
But don't go too far, because it might be a question. Yes, sir.
I'm here for the next article.
We're attacking.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Anybody in the... At the podium in the gym, David?
No.
Okay, we're ready to vote then. All those in favor of Article Eight, please raise your hand. Okay, David, how... What does it look like in there? Eight for eight, and eight in favor. Okay, those opposed? Okay, unanimous. Thank you. Article Nine.
Mr. Moderator, move to appropriate thirty-five hundred dollars from recreation open space as printed under Project One in the warrant, period.
Second.
Okay, so Article Nine is broken down into three projects, and so... Yes, sir, on Article One, or Project One.
I'll recap all of them together.
Well, the others haven't been moved yet, so...
They are the same article, though.
Okay, then, we'll go back.
We believed you want... We were under the impression that the committee wanted them voted separately.
We do want them voted separately, but they're under the same article.
They are.
But Project Two hasn't been identified yet, so if we'll go back to the Select Board...
Very brief presentation that outlines both, all the projects that we're proposing.
Okay, but Article... Project Two hasn't been entered yet. So just bear with me. We'll have Project Two and Three identified, and then we'll go to you for the summation. No, it's... He wants to present everything on the whole article. Just read Project Two and Project Three.
I move to appropriate seventy thousand dollars with nineteen five twenty from the Historical Resources Reserve and fifty thousand four hundred eighty dollars from the CPA Undesignated Budget Reserve for the Thayer Memorial Library as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Okay, and then Project Three, is that proceeding, or is that being withdrawn?
I move, we strike, Article... Or Project Three at this time.
Yeah. Okay. So I'm doing a brief presentation, and I'm going to give just a couple of details on both Projects One and Two.
I'm sorry to... Well, we seem to have one motion, then we had a second motion, then a motion to waive, so...
We were under the impression they wanted separate votes, but we're just... All one motion, for you.
Okay. Okay.
Go ahead.
I'll be very brief. I'm going to do a very quick recap on C... Sorry, Winn Clark, nine twenty-eight Main Street, Vice Chair of CPA Committee. A very quick recap on what CPA is, since it is still fairly new to us. Community Preservation Act was adopted in Lancaster in 2020, and it has enabled our community to establish a fund that is specifically dedicated to historic preservation, open space recreation, and affordable housing. It does not go into the general account. Funds are collected as a one percent annual surcharge. That amounts to about fifty dollars a year for the average resident, and exemptions exist for the first hundred thousand and for lower income. Our committee, the CPA Committee, was established... Was formed in 2021. It's our job to educate the community about CPA, solicit project submissions, oversee the CPA budgets, and vetting project proposals that will be brought to you like we are doing tonight. Thank you for advancing the slides without me saying anything. Perfect. So I think Linia already recapped on these numbers. We have a hundred and sixty thousand in revenue collected from residents, state contribution to thirty-five seventeen. And I'm just going to do a real quick recap on Project One and Two, with Project Three being dropped. Project One is a recreation project. We're proposing that the gate at the town beach be replaced and an attendance shed added. This is to facilitate safer and more efficient environment at the town beach. The current gate's too far from the road, allows for too much parking after hours. It's very heavy, dangerous actually, for people to move and operate. And the attendance shed will allow the beach attendant to stay in one place and not be wandering all over the place and do their job better. Those are just a few photos of the current gate and the current situation. Okay, next slide, please. Thank you. Thayer Memorial Library renovations rehabilitate and preserve portions of the failing roof and basement masonry, repair and preserve the interior ceiling and walls damaged from water. So some of this is, you know, preventative measures. A lot of it is actual renovation and preservation. These were highly... These were recommended by the Spencer Preservation Group, who have done a lot of work for the Bull Finch Meeting House and for the library and other buildings. So very highly regarded. And there are a few photos of the current condition at the library. And as mentioned, Project Three, which you may have read or seen about, due to some administrative details and some wording issues, and not due to any objection by any involved parties, everybody's completely in favor of this. But it was determined that the best course of action is to drop this till the October meeting, so that there aren't any hangups with the Attorney General or any other... Any other parties.
Thank you. So Project Three is... Project Three is withdrawn.
Correct.
And the article is written so as they want to have individual votes. So we're going to ask for discussion, and then we'll go to vote on Project One, followed by Project Two. Hi.
Hi, Kathy Hughes, eighty, Fire Road eleven. I don't, in principle, have anything against Project One. I do think there's a concern about the safety if you move that gate, so I don't know if this is the appropriate time to discuss where the gate's going to be located. But there's a lot of people that use that facility after hours, and they're going to be parking on the street, and that's a narrow street where people go forty-five miles an hour. It's not particularly safe. So I would just encourage you to think about the location a little bit more. I'm involved with the Speck Pond Water Preservation Association, so we have lots of thoughts on how to keep the areas safe.
Thank you.
Winn Clark, nine twenty-eight Main Street. We have had this discussion. It's not on the CPA Committee to determine the exact location. Kelly Dolan heads up Health and Human Services, Chief Moody, Commissioner Moody. Those two will work together to determine the sweet spot where it should be. There are issues with too many people parking there after hours and having parties. But at the same time, we don't want to put that gate right at the street so that residents are stopped from using the beach after hours. So they'll have that conversation and make that decision.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? And Mr. Carr, anything in the gym?
No.
Okay. So we're going to vote on Project One. All those in favor of Project One, please raise your hand. Okay. In the gym, it looks like...
We're unanimous in the gym.
I'm sorry?
We are unanimous.
Unanimous, okay, thank you. All those opposed? Okay, we're unanimous here as well. Project Two. Now, we're going to vote on that. All those in favor of Project Two, please raise your hand. David, it looks like unanimous in your room?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Those opposed? Okay, unanimous. Thank you. All right, and Project Three is withdrawn. Now, we're on Article Ten.
Mr. Moderator, I move to accept... Excuse me, accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-four B, which allows the town's trust funds to be invested in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter two oh three C, the so-called prudent investment rule.
Second. Okay. Ms. Hodges.
The fiscal... The fiscal year twenty-four state budget included a change to the standards for investments of trust funds for municipalities. This is included in Chapter Twenty-eight of the Special Acts of 2023. It includes a change to the standards for investing trust funds. It amends Section Twenty-six of MGL to insert a local acceptance provision which allows investments in according with the so-called prudent investment rule. It is called two oh three C. The revised version is here in yellow and has been adopted at the state level in Section Fifty-four. While not all the town's funds would benefit from this, there are some that likely could see a higher interest draw by adopting this updated law, and this will allow the treasurer to explore those instances. The Select Board recommends affirmative action on Article Ten.
Okay, discussion on Article Ten. Anybody in the gym, David?
No.
Okay, we're going to proceed to vote on Article Ten. All those in favor of Article Ten, please raise your hand. Okay, all those opposed, raise your hand. Okay, it appears we have another unanimous vote.
Mr. Moderator.
Article Eleven.
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the Select Board to accept by gift purchase or eminent domain assessors' parcel map nineteen, Lot eleven, and assessors' parcel map fourteen, Lot fifteen, on such terms and conditions the Select Board deems acceptable.
Second.
Sorry. To be very clear, friendly amendment to the motion, by gift. This is a gift of land.
Okay. Ms. Hodges, you appear to be... Present on this.
This vote is the final step, which include... Was included in the renegotiation of the Memorandum of Understanding between the Town and Seven Oh Two LLC in October of last year. This conveys the entirety of approximately ninety acres of property in North Lancaster to the town. The properties in question are sighted along the Nashville River and are adjacent to several other town, land trust, and conservation parcels. The parcels were conveyed to the town by Seven Oh Two LLC in February of this year after the matter was renegotiated in October. The town received two quick claim deeds, and upon affirmative vote of town meeting this evening, shall forward those to the Registry of Deeds to be recorded with the Town of Lancaster as our parcels. They will also be added to the town's open space inventory. The Select Board recommends affirmative action on Article Eleven.
Okay, those wishing to be heard on Article Eleven, please come to the microphone.
Hello there, Anne Ogilvy for Turner Lane. I'm glad to see this article is on the warrant tonight. This, of course, goes back to the 2017 land agreement that was made by Stanley Starr, Walter Sandrowski, and Mark Grasso with the North Lancaster LLC, and I can't remember the five oh one, maybe, developers, but the North Lancaster developers that we're still in negotiations with, or that are, you know, maybe... May bring something to the town eventually. So we're seven years later, and I think we're almost two and a half, three years past the expiration of the original agreement, which was to, I guess, make up for past wrongs. But it's great to be here tonight and that these eighty-six acres are finally going to be in the possession of the town as they were promised seven years ago. Thank you.
David, is there anyone in the gym wishing to be heard?
No.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, we're going to bring a vote. All those in favor of Article Eleven, please raise your hand. Okay, those opposed? Okay, unanimous. Thank you. Article Twelve.
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the town administrator, under the direction of the Select Board, to dispose of the parcels listed in the warrant consistent with the town's abutter lot sales program, adopted by town meeting May 2023 as Article Thirteen, and to task the town administration with facilitating said sale of certain smaller town-owned properties to abutting property owners consistent with the adopted policies and procedures adopted by the Select Board in December of 2023.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Hodges.
This article is step three of a four-step process by which the town adopts and oversees the abutter lot sales program. Discussed and accepted at last year's annual town meeting, the town voted to accept the idea of an abutter lot sales program where either blighted or vacant parcels that were unbuildable and property of the town may be acquired for a fee by an abutter for certain residential uses. The program allows the return of these parcels to the tax rolls and provides for their upkeep and beautification as they would no longer be vacant but would be maintained by the purchasing of butter. Under the terms of the program, town meeting must accept the properties which the town wished to put forth for purchase. Pending adoption this evening, the burden then shifts back to the town to publicize the available parcels and solicit abutters relative to their sale, subject to adequate title search and any other legal requirements and satisfactory payment as outlined in the policies adopted by the Select Board in December. The full text of the program and policies therein is available online to view on the town's website under the Select Board tab. There are seven parcels, excuse me, available for sale which meet the program criteria for sales and are under the minimum assessed value of thirty-five thousand. Each of these lots are unbuildable. The Select Board recommends affirmative action on Article Twelve.
Thank you. Those wishing to be heard on Article Twelve, please come to the microphone. Hi.
Hi, Emily Taylor, six thirty-four Main. This was asked the other night at the warrant review, and I just can't remember the answer. There are three lots that are point zero three seven. Two of them are two hundred, and one of them is valued at eighty-three hundred, and I just couldn't remember why that was, and I was wondering if you could remind me.
The assessors have said that their... That lot was deemed as... In a different category, which carried, I guess, a larger valuation. And so since it was under the valuation of thirty-five thousand dollars, we included it in here. However, next year, if it's not sold, she's going to change the designation so that it comes down and it's less valuation. I think it was old from when all of the lots were divided, because they were sold in small parcels along Speck Pond.
Anybody else wish to be heard? Anybody in the gym, David?
No.
Okay. Those in favor of Article Twelve, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed? Okay, unanimous. Thank you. Article Thirteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-one, Section Twenty-one, to direct this Select Board to include in the warrant for the 2025 annual town election the following question for submission to the voters. Shall the town vote to have its Select Board appoint a chief of the police and fire departments who may be designated as the Commissioner of Public Safety in accordance with Section one oh one of Chapter Forty-one of the Massachusetts General Laws?
Second.
This article seeks to adopt Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-one, Section Twenty-one, whereby the Select Board may appoint a chief of police and fire to serve as a Commissioner of Public Safety. While it is well-known that Lancaster has employed a dual chief in years before, when the town began to contemplate a similar scenario relative to Lancaster Police and Fire now, we were unable to find a corresponding affirmative vote of town meeting allowing the dual role and appointing authority for the Select Board. In an effort to ensure that appointments made by the Select both current and future are done consistent with Mass. General Law, the town is asking town meeting to formally adopt this statute. This does not remove the town's ability to return to separate police and fire chiefs should the determination be made in the future by the Select Board. Adoption of this provision only allows the town to exercise this as an alternative should the situation warrant an application. The Select Board recommends affirmative action on Article Thirteen.
Okay, those wishing to be heard on Article Thirteen, please come to the microphone. Anybody wishing to speak in the gym, David?
No.
Okay, we're going to go to a vote then. All those in favor of Article Thirteen, please raise your hand. Okay, those opposed? Okay, we have one opposition, so that clearly passes. Article Fourteen, I am led to believe that that is being withdrawn. Is that correct? Okay.
Mr. Moderator, I move for town meeting to ratify the affirmative vote made by voters at special town meeting held on October first, 2012, as Article Three, which effectively accepted the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Five N, and thereby establishing a veterans' tax abatement program for the town of Lancaster. I further move upon ratification heretofore that this program shall take effect on July first, 2024.
Second.
Ms. Hodges.
This article seeks to ratify an affirmative vote of town meeting that was taken on October first, 2012. Through that vote, the town formally adopted Mass. General Law, Chapter Fifty, Section Five N, which allowed veterans the ability to engage in and benefit from a tax work-off program similar to the town's senior tax work program. The statute as written here allows the town to establish a work-off veterans program consistent with Mass. General Law. This provide veterans work opportunities that assist in lowering their real estate tax liability. While the statute adopted in 2012, the town neglected to notify the State's Department of Revenue of its acceptance and did not submit the required paperwork. Unfortunately, without these steps, the program was never officially created in the eyes of the Commonwealth, and our veterans are not currently able to avail themselves of these opportunities. The town would very much welcome the opportunity to offer this program to our veterans and ask for town meeting's ratification of the 2012 affirmative vote so we can complete the required paperwork and begin to market the program in earnest beginning next fiscal year. The Select Board recommends affirmative action on Article Fifteen.
Fifteen, yes. Those wishing to be heard on Article Fifteen, please make your way to the microphone. Anybody in the gym, David?
No.
Okay. Question, or just anxious to vote? Okay. Okay, all those in favor of Article Fifteen. Okay, those opposed? Okay, that is unanimous. Thank you. Article Sixteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move to move the town's general bylaws by regulating door-to-door soliciting and canvassing in the town of Lancaster by first amending the title of Chapter Ninety-two to read hawkers, peddlers, and canvassing and solicitation. And secondly, by adding new Article Three in Chapter Ninety-two entitled canvassing and solicitation as printed in the warrant.
Second. Ms. Hodges.
The town has received a growing number of questions and concerns from residents surrounding door-to-door sales in town. The town's current bylaw as written regulates only individuals choosing to sell fruit and fish from baskets door-to-door. Hand to God, that's for real. So... This bylaw as written will also have members of the Select Board... This bylaw as written has members of the Select Board as the overseers of fish and fruit and requires the town clerk maintain the paperwork, quote-unquote, but does not clearly define what that means. In reviewing this bylaw and how we may use it to help the current door-to-door regulations, it became apparent that the bylaw needed to be updated in order to allow the town some ability to regulate residential sales. To the best of our knowledge, there are not a lot of door-to-door fish salespersons in town, and the amendment to the bylaw must focus on more appropriate times that people would solicit regardless of what they're trying to sell. Since many who wish to canvass the town generally seek permission... the town generally seek permission from the police department already, we believed codifying that in the bylaw would be a best practice. In consultation with the Public Safety Commissioner, we asked that the town code, Chapter 92, be amended as printed in the warrant, beginning on page eight. The changes protect the privacy of our residents while taking steps to prevent abuse and fraud. While the town has no intent to infringe upon anyone's rights protected under the Constitution, we do wish to restrict certain door-to-door activities by placing reasonable limits on times for these activities and outlining how one may notify the town relative to their intentions as a matter of public safety. The Select Board recommends affirmative action on Article 16.
Thank you. Those wishing to be heard on Article 16, please make your way to the microphone.
Dave LeBlanc, 45 Farm Land Lane. I don't want people coming to my house to sell a bunch of stuff either, but I did notice that there was an exception in there for youth, for 14 and younger, to be able to kind of go sell in there. I don't know why 14 was selected, so like if a Girl Scout went to go sell some Girl Scout cookies, or a Boy Scout went to go sell some popcorn or something, and they were 15 or 16, it seems like it would be in violation. So I was just curious, why 14?
They would not be in violation, but 14 are underneath permission of a parent. 15 and older does not, at this point.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, those in favor of Article 16, please raise your hand. Okay, those opposed? Okay, unanimous. Thank you. Article 17.
Mr. Moderator, I move for the town to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Section 32, or, sorry, Chapter 32, Sections 4 to B and 4 to B and 1/2, not sure how you're half a letter, to allow permanent, intermittent, or call firefighters to be credited with full-time service for the purpose of calculating retirement benefits in accordance with Chapter 32 of the Massachusetts General Laws and any other applicable law or collective bargaining agreements.
Second.
Ms. Hodges.
Chairman Carrigan, the half is when the statute is written and then they add extra to it. That's why we have E and a quarter, E and a third.
She already knows. She always knows the right answer.
No, I don't, but I knew that one. This article seeks adoption of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 32, Section 2B and 1/2. Adoption of this law, the full text of which is here, provides baseline criteria for converting part-time and call service for our firefighting staff to full-time service where applicable. Affirmative action on this article allows retirement boards the ability to calculate an individual's part-time service in Lancaster for fire EMS as credible towards their pension in the event that the individual becomes a full-time firefighter in Lancaster or within another community. The full text is also available to pick up outside the auditorium on the tables where you registered this evening. The Select Board recommends affirmative action on Article 17.
Those wishing to be heard on 17, please make your way to the microphone. Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, please raise your hand. Okay, unanimous. Thank you. Article 18.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the town's animal control bylaw as printed in the warrant and authorize the Select Board to petition the legislature for a special act as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Ms. Hodges.
This article seeks to amend the town's animal control bylaw by aligning the rules and regulations to the current practice and having the duties of the current Animal Control Commission, which has not met in quite a few years, effectively disbanded. Those responsibilities would now become part of the Select Board duties, as those offices are permanent fixtures in town, and they would carry out those duties in conjunction with the Public Safety Commissioner. Town staff have been able to speak with some of the former members of the Animal Control Commission, who are also in favor of this change. The town has not been in compliance with this bylaw for many years, and should the need arise where a matter may have to be heard by the Animal Control Board, it is important to know that a meeting can take place and there will be a quorum of commissioners able to preside over the matter. Additionally, the new provisions allow the town Select Board to delegate their authority to appoint an animal control officer to the Public Safety Commissioner or another qualified member of the town staff, should they choose to do so. This allows for the hiring of such position to be overseen and completed in the same manner for all other town recruitments and onboarding. It also permits the animal control officer's salary to be governed by the same regulations as afforded in the previous personnel bylaw from last year and the classification and compensation plans discussed in Article 6 this evening. The Select Board recommends affirmative action on Article 18.
Thank you. Those wishing to be heard on Article 18, please make your way to the
Brief interlude.
Please bear with us. Town Council is conferring with Ms. Hodges. While they're looking for that, I do want to thank everybody involved with the audio and camera crew. I know, trying to get... I understand this isn't the easiest building to get a connecting form, so thank you very much. Thank you for the interpreters. I'm always amazed how you can... I'm amazed how you can listen and repeat at the same time. It's fascinating.
Mr. Moderator, while they find a clarification, I move we table this and move on to the citizen's petition on Article 19.
And then come back.
And then come back.
Okay.
Second. Okay, now, we're going to go to Article 19, and this is a citizen's petition. So somebody involved with that should come forward to present. This is the Hawthorne Lane. I'm not, citizen's petition?
Good evening. Erin Smith, 62 Hawthorne Lane. So Article 19 is to see if the town will vote to accept the layout of Hawthorne Lane as a public way, along with associated roadway improvements, water and drainage infrastructure, and open space access. In the location depicted as a proposed minor street on the plan entitled Definitive Subdivision Plan Prepared by Whitman &amp; Bingham Associates, LLC, Lebonster, October 6, 2015. Said plan recorded with the Worcester County Registry of Deeds in the Plan Book 934, Plan 43, or an act in the manner relating thereto.
Just waiting for a second. Second, okay. Those wishing to be heard?
Mr. Moderator, I just want to point out the Select Board voted and recommends affirmative action on the article.
Okay. Now, with that said, the, conferring with town council, this article is not going to be binding on the townspeople, because there's a procedure for road acceptance that hasn't been followed. But given that this has been kicking around Lancaster for quite a few years, we're going to have discussion. It's really more of a barometer to the Select Board as to what's next going to happen with Hawthorne Way. And I know Mr. Shore has an amendment, which I would say ordinarily would not be in order, but given, just to get all of this out on the table, we're going to entertain that.
My name is Larry Shore, 750 George Hill Road. I propose the following amendment to Article 19 Hawthorne Lane, citizen's petition. Quote, first, let me say, the amendment is to be inserted immediately after, quote, Worcester County Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 934, Plan 43, end quote. The amendment reads as follows, "And also including a 30-foot-wide utility easement spanning one of the lots in the open space parcel to the west of the development and to the Eagle Ridge property as described in the Planning Board's Certificate of Approval Special Permit Application, signed and dated January 11, 2016."
Okay, so is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Do we want discussion on that, or to vote on that, and then go back to the original article?
Yes. The citizen's position, petition proposes acceptance of the Hawthorne Lane water and drainage infrastructure. The water infrastructure as implemented is incomplete and does not comport with the Planning Board's Certificate of Approval Special Permit Application dated January 11, 2016. In particular, Condition 7 states, quote, "Prior to the Planning Board's endorsement of definitive subdivision approval on the flexible development plan, the applicant shall provide to the Planning Board a 30-foot-wide utility easement spanning one of the proposed lots in the open space parcel to the west of the development and to the Eagle Ridge property," end quote. The utility easement is an essential element in addressing deficiencies in the as-built Hawthorne Lane and Eagle Ridge public water infrastructure, and provides the opportunity for a future upgrade to correct these deficiencies. In particular, the easement will allow the town of Lancaster to connect, loop, the Hawthorne Lane and Eagle Ridge water systems. This will lead to improved water quality to these subdivisions, likely reduced operating costs for all town residents who will now bear the costs of these previously association-maintained systems, and provide better conformity with Lancaster bylaw, Section 30112b4, which describes that permanent dead-end water mains shall not normally be allowed. I ask that you vote in favor of this amendment.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard on the amendment? Anybody wishing to be heard in the gym, David?
No.
Okay. Oh?
Susan Sussman, 64 Nicholas Lane Drive. Yeah. So, I live in Eagle Ridge, and I'm somewhat familiar with the people who may or may not be associated with constructing this project. I want to want, I really want to know why they are not responsible for bringing things up to the standards that the state sets and that they agreed to with the original plan.
Good question. Hopefully we got an answer. Is there a road bond that is in place?
No, there is not a road bond in place. But there was work done by the developer, my understanding, is to bring the road up to the road standards of the town in the last year or two.
So what I don't understand is why someone can come in and, with a plan, and there are requirements, there are regulations, there are laws that regulate how they can do this development or this project, and have no responsibility for actually following through on that. That, it just doesn't make any sense to me. So, how does that happen? We have a planning board, a zoning board, we have all these boards that are approving projects without any ability to hold people to account.
Yeah. And I wish I could... So I wish I could speak to it. The planning board that dealt with this development, none of those members are still on the planning board. When we...
But it, but it doesn't matter. That's not the question. The question is, does the planning board or the whoever board have the ability to hold them to account? You said, you mentioned a bond for the roads.
No, no, no. I did not mention a bond. I did not mention a bond.
Okay, but there, or something, hold back or something. There is no penalty for just saying, oops?
So I was, I was merely trying to explain that this was a problem. When we joined the board, this was a project that had already gone in place. We were trying to fix the situation. And there was a lot of talk about there being a bond. There was not a bond. There was no, no bond in existence at all. There is a bank account that the developer has money in, but the town has no right to any of that. We have been working with the developer, trying to get them to bring the road up to standard and do all the things we need to do. But because of the way in which it was approved, there's very little stick for us to use to get them done. So the progress we were doing is all by working hard with the developers. And I was only, I wasn't trying to make an excuse. I was just explaining, we're not working with the planning board that approved it, and we're not, I know we're just trying to solve the problem, for both the town and the residents.
And moving forward...
I agree with you 100%.
Are there regulations in place to protect the town as well as people who purchase property, thinking that certain things are going to be done, and they have not been done?
Sure. So there are conditions that the planning board, and I won't want to speak for the planning board, but for each development, they work with them on conditions for approval of the development, and then they have enforceability, along with the building commissioner and others, to enforce those conditions. So unfortunately, this, this was a project that was, in my estimation, mishandled with a bond that wasn't a bond, and a long, long time ago, we're just trying to, to figure it out now, but yes.
Right. That's great. I'm glad that the town is working to protect the citizens, especially those who purchase these properties. But I would also like, moving forward, to know what happens the next time a developer comes in and wants to build something. How do we protect our town and our citizens?
I, I agree 100%.
Thank you. I think Mr. Streeter may have an answer going forward.
Yes, the chair of the planning board is right behind you.
Briefly, Frank Streeter, Chair of the Planning Board. First off, I'd like to commend Steve and Kate for dealing with this tar baby, as it were. It's been a horrible thing. I do want to make one thing clear to people. The planning board does not have direct enforcement authority. That must be done through the building commissioner. Once the planning board issues an order of conditions, it is up to the building commissioner to enforce that. Regrettably, that did not happen in this case, and we are reaching the point where on May 16, the original subdivision approval given will expire. I'm sure town council can opine on that. I cannot.
Thank you, Frank.
Yes, sir.
Joe Duramo, 127 Harvard Road. So I've been out on the town website and found a, a collection of documents regarding Hawthorne Lane, and it, actually, the first piece is a letter from our town council here today, Ivory Afreed, sent January 18th this year, 2024. And it's, if I could read a little bit from this, and just excerpts from it, it's my understanding that individuals residing along Hawthorne Lane have asserted that the town of Lancaster has an ownership interest in the way, obligating the town to maintain the way. Later on, she says, "It is important to establish that the town does not have any duty to maintain the private way." In the next paragraph, "Neither the subdivision approvals nor the flexible development permit require the town to take ownership of this private way." And currently, Melanson Brothers owns the fee interest in the way. Although Melanson deeded out various lots in the subdivision, Melanson continues to hold the fee interest in the way. So the builder currently owns this street and is maintaining it, maybe. I'm not sure what's going on there. He created a homeowner's trust as part of his documents, but when he sold the properties, he did not include a homeowner's association clause in the deeds, perhaps... in the deeds, perhaps complicating the sales, made it real easy to sell these without having a homeowners' association encumbering those sales. And so now he wants to get rid of this. The town is being asked to take on something that perhaps the homeowner should be dealing with, the builder on this, rather than coming to the town for relief. And so I really wonder what's in the best interests of the town. And I do wonder about the Select Board's recommendation for this, why they approve that. Why are they recommending the town do this, when I don't see an interest that the town has in doing this?
I can respond to that. I can tell you what the Select Board is interested in, and that's ambulances getting up Hawthorne Lane. That's what I'm interested in. And this situation stinks, and everyone has been saying it, but I would encourage you to speak to the residents who live in Hawthorne Lane and to the abutters, Mr. Shore spoke earlier. This is just a mess, but it's not a mess that we can ignore. It needs a solution, and we have, doing our best, Mr. Carrigan and Mrs. Hodges, is doing everything that they can to try to make this right. Everything you said is true, Mr. D'Amo, but it's not solving a problem. So what we're trying to do is trying to solve a problem in the best interests of all residents. Thank you.
All right, so we're still on the amendment, and we're going to take a vote on the amendment, unless somebody in the gym is making their way to the microphone. Thank you. All right. All those in favor of the motion that Mr. Shore made with that additional language, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you. Those opposed? Probably less than ten, but, so the motion passes. Again, this is, the whole article is really only a pulse reading of the community and what they want they're directing the selectmen to do, because the process hasn't been done, hasn't started yet. So now back to the article, and as amended, any other discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? Please raise your hand. In favor of the article, yes, as amended. Okay, those opposed? Okay, I guess we're going to queue it up for a clicker. I can't quite tell. And while Mandy's getting that lined up, I would encourage everybody on your way out to leave the clicker. I believe there's a box probably on the table where you checked in.
There's still one article to finish, though, so don't rush.
No, we're not adjourning or... Okay. Okay, we're ready to vote on Article 19, and please commence voting now. And when we're done voting on this, we are going to go back to Article 18. So please don't leave. And somebody will share with me, the Bruins are up three to one, so you don't have to rush off. Okay, if we could wrap up voting now in the next five seconds? Okay, we'll stop voting now. Okay, significant number of people have left, so we're down to 149 voters, 91 in favor, 58 opposed. So that will, I guess, send the message to the Select Board to take some action regarding what they think is appropriate next on Hawthorne Lane.
Mr. Moderator, pursuant, back to Article 18, I move to accept as printed in a warrant with clarification that the new language in Section 10-1 is the phrase, quote, "or its designee," and authorize the Select Board to petition the legislature as printed in the warrant.
All right, now I'm a little confused, because we had it open, we had discussion, now we're moving it a different version.
It's a friendly amendment, only because it didn't print in color, and so what we need to specify so that it's clear to town meeting is what is being amended. And so what is being amended under one is the definition of our animal control officer, and the new section goes from an officer appointed by the Select Board. This is the new section, comma, "or its designee," comma, then the remainder.
Sorry, one small comment. Amanda, this is just because the AG is going to want to make sure that town meeting understands what it voted on. So to be clear, we are adding "or its designee" in Section 10-1, so I just want to make that very clear.
Okay, anybody wishing to be heard? Okay, we're going to move to a vote, and all those in favor of Article 18, as was now described, please raise your hand. Okay, those opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I move we adjourn the town meeting?
All in favor? Yes, opposed? Thank you.